I'd like to call the August 18, 2020 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As we hold our meeting this evening, children and young people and their families, along with their teachers and school workers, are starting the 2020 school year. This school year for our public schools is starting off very differently than what is traditional due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence during which people may offer a silent prayer for our educators, our school workers, children, and families, that they remain safe as this non-traditional school year begins, and so that we can all reflect on how we can all support our schools and our kids as we continue to navigate our way through this great health crisis that faces our community, our nation, and our world. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you all again for being with us on our August 18 County Commission meeting. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the commission at this meeting. All right, we now come to the consent agenda and the approval of the agenda. There are two items commissioners I'd like to address. One is that I'd like to request that we add, under new business, a discussion of the public comment process for the commission, which we will be using as we continue to operate through the COVID-19 protocols. So without objection, we'll add that to new business. The other is I would like to ask the commission to move the resolution in opposition of the Catawba Native American Nation Casino in North Carolina to be taken up following the approval of the consent agenda. And the reason for that is we have with us Chief Richard Sneed, the principal chief of the Eastern Band of the Cherokee with us, but he can't stay for long. And so I wanted to make sure that when we take this up, if there are any questions about this resolution, that he would be available to answer them. So without objection, we'll take that up following the approval of the consent agenda. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on the consent agenda.
Yes.
So that our citizens who look at this and see all these budget amendments, I just want to make sure that these budget amendments are because we have received grants, and they're going in on the revenue side, and we have to show we're not amending the budget that was adopted for fiscal year '21. So we are, but this money's coming in from a grant side. Okay, so it's coming in from the grant side, and we're showing that's what these amendments are. Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, good question. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published with the moving the casino development item to after consent and adding public comment item to new business?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right, we will go ahead and take up the resolution on the proposed Catawba Casino Development. We had a review of this item at our last commission meeting. So I don't know if there are any additional questions that any commissioners have about the resolution. If not, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and second?
Mr. Chairman, can I comment, please?
Yes, sir.
When we get our agenda items in a week, I look at items on the agenda, and I look at things and really just see where things are going and how it can gain support. And this here really, I don't know, I really had some sleepless nights thinking about this, and I'll tell you why here in just a second. I completely understand the economic impact that that casino in Catawba would have on West North Carolina. I understand all of that. And it could be, could be, have the potential to be detrimental to the economy here in West North Carolina. But then on the other side of the thing, it also would be a bonus to the economy in the Cleveland County, Gaston County, Kings Mountain area. Now, I realize I'm not a Cleveland County Commissioner, or I'm a Gaston County Commissioner, or Kings Mountain City Council. But what I do want to say is I have been, over the last five months, commenting on things that have been going on and saying that I am for everybody. I believe that everybody should have the same opportunities. So I did some research, and I know that there's things that could be said in the paper, but when I hear that the Catawba Indian Nation, their per capita income is like $11,000, they have twice the poverty rate of the state of South Carolina. And we just, in this chamber, voted two weeks ago on a resolution talking about unfair treatment for the gain of another group. And I just can't grasp that this is not basically going against what we said two weeks ago. We have the Catawba Indian Nation who, they would benefit from this, but because it will hurt the Eastern Band of Cherokees, we're opposing it. And I just can't wrap my hands around to support this resolution. I understand the personal views of the commission. I really wish that it would have been as such, that each commissioner could have just personally supported, and it didn't come before the commission. But I just think that we are going against what happened two weeks ago. And I know we can sit here all night and argue the differences and all that, but everybody should have the same opportunity. And so I thank you for that.
Appreciate you sharing your thoughts on that. You know, in looking at this issue, to me, I've been persuaded that there are substantive differences in the way this proposed development is being, the process for it being developed, and how it would operate. And I think that as the chief discussed with the commission at the meeting last week, the way the Eastern Band of the Cherokee has operated their enterprises has been very thoughtfully constructed to create significant public benefits. And I think there are important differences there. So that's part of the reason that I've been persuaded this is a resolution I support. I would like to ask Chief Richard Sneed if he would like to comment on, you know, some of the concerns that were expressed, as well as some of the reasons that he thinks the commission should be aware of supporting it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Penneland, for your very thoughtful comments. And I can certainly appreciate your position on this issue. To the chairman's point on this, if we're going to look at this from the perspective about what is fair and what is right, it is about the rule of law. We have, for the last 22 years, operated two, well, a casino resort, and then within the last five years, a second operation in Murphy, North Carolina. We have been in full compliance with the National Indian Gaming Commission, with the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act, and with all other regulation that is imposed upon us by the federal government. How this entire process of the land being taken into trust in Kings Mountain for the Catawba Nation is completely unprecedented and completely politicized. The fact that this process began with a casino developer from South Carolina essentially doing what is called an Indian country, and for those who may not be familiar, there is this entire subculture in this country. We used to be the primary culture called Indian country. There's an entire section of federal law, 25 CFR, that deals with how the federal government deals with Indian tribes, federally recognized Indian tribes. With that in mind, one of the things that happens post-1988 under IGRA is that there have been unscrupulous developers who will essentially reservation shop to find a tribe that would like to get gaming. But, and in the case of the Catawba, their settlement act, which is an act of Congress, is a settlement between the United States government and the state of South Carolina. In that settlement agreement, they were awarded, I believe it was $53 million, but I may be off on that, and that was in 1993. They agreed that they were not eligible to game under IGRA, and they agreed that all jurisdiction and land taken into trust would be negotiated with the governor of South Carolina. They also agreed in that settlement agreement that any gaming would be negotiated with the state of South Carolina and the governor of South Carolina. When that bid failed, this developer, Mr. Wallace Sheaves, engaged with the tribe and, at that time, decided that a strategy might be, well, we'll move into North Carolina. The fact that a South Carolina senator introduced a bill to the Senate to move a federally recognized tribe from one state to another for the purpose of gaming is completely unprecedented. That bill has failed, it stalled at the Senate level. So the Department of Interior, which, and this is the whole basis for our lawsuit because of all of the points that I just mentioned in their settlement agreement, we contend that they have acted outside of the law and outside of that settlement agreement, which is in fact an act of Congress, to move this tribe into the state of North Carolina without the consultation of the state. So this also becomes a state sovereignty issue. So to very quickly condense, if we wanted to, because the question always comes about, well, why doesn't the Eastern Band just go open a casino down there? I met with the county commissioners in Shelby County about two years ago, and they said, we don't care who opens a casino, we would love for the Eastern Band to do it. And I said, well, I don't think you understand the process. The process is, if we want to take line into trust, the Eastern Band, for the purpose of gaming, we submit a trust application to the Department of Interior through the Bureau of Indian Affairs. That triggers what's called two-part determination. Two-part determination essentially means that the tribe then would have to pay for environmental impact studies, crime impact studies, traffic impact studies. A process that usually takes about 10 to 15 years, usually costs about $10 to $20 million. And at the end of it, through consultation with the local governments, and then finally with the governor, the governor can say, I do not concur, and doesn't sign off on it. That whole process that we are subject to has just been bypassed with the stroke of a pen. And so if we're going to talk about fair treatment, and what is just and what is unjust, we have played by the rules for 22 years, and we have been a solid partner with the state of North Carolina and the surrounding counties, which is why I believe that the entire Western North Carolina delegation has opposed this action and supported the Eastern Band. County commissions, all the county commissions west of here have supported it, and the Council of Independent Business Owners support our position as well. So while from a social justice perspective, I certainly can understand the sentiments, and I concur. From a, if we're going to talk about what is just and right, then we, as elected officials, are bound by the rule of law. And this is unjust and not right. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for being here again. Commissioners, are there any other questions that people have about the resolution before we vote, or any other comments?
Yeah, I've got just a comment. You know, I want to make sure that it's very clear on my vote. For me...
Sorry, I'll turn it on. I just want to make sure it's very clear, since the chief is here. I just want to make sure that people understand, for me, this is for support of the Cherokee Nation, for the support of the jobs in Cherokee. If you ask my personal opinion, I'm not a fan of casinos at all. However, I am a fan of the jobs for the Cherokee and for the Cherokee Nation and the friends that I have over there. And so that's for my intent, that's why I intend to support it. Thanks.
Any other, Commissioner Presley?
Yes, I've been back and forth on this all day, talking with different people. And I think, after Chief won't hear, and I can support this now.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Chief Sneed, thank you for your presentation, and I truly appreciate the travel infrastructure that you have in place, and how strong it is, and what that means for the Eastern Band, particularly in terms of employment and your own economy. What really swayed me was the joint column that was written by Senator Davis and Representative Queen that was signed by a bipartisan Western North Carolina delegation. So it didn't speak to me on either political side, but it's the right thing to do for this area. So thank you.
I would like to thank you too, Chief, for your comments. For me, it's been an easy decision, because when I look at it and see, you know, the tribe is in South Carolina, and if South Carolina wouldn't approve it, I mean, you know, let's follow the law and do the right thing. So I will be voting for it.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. I appreciate everyone's thoughtful consideration of this in all regards. There's a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Chief, thank you again for being here this evening very much. We appreciate you and all that you're doing for Western North Carolina. And I know you've got another meeting to go to, so thank you for taking the time to be with us. Yep. All right, commissioners, we come now to presentations. And the first item up is an update on the One Buncombe Fund, and Kit Kramer and Philip Harden and Matt Raker are gonna triple team this one for us. Kit, it's great to see you.
You as well. And I'm not sure what the protocol is. Should I leave it on or take it off?
It's your choice. You're good social distance from us, so it's your decision.
Okay, I'll just leave it on. I probably smeared lipstick all over my face or something anyway. Thank you for having me this evening to talk about the One Buncombe Fund. And I really want to thank you for being leaders in the community and thinking about this. The concept of the creation of the fund was, the origin was from the staff and your leadership on county commission. And I really appreciate that on behalf of businesses and workers throughout this community. We first heard about this concept in March, and as we were meeting on a regular basis to talk about how we could react effectively to the massive number of workers who were laid off through no fault of their own, and the number of small businesses who were facing immediate loss of income because of COVID-19. We were looking for something we could do that would help meet that need immediately, and One Buncombe was that solution. So as you'll recall, at the March 24 meeting, you created the fund officially and then authorized $200,000 as seed funding for the fund. And we really appreciated that because it got the ball rolling. The structure of this particular program, and if you'll go to the third slide, that would be great. Here we go. The structure, fortunately, you had the Buncombe County Service Foundation as a fiscal entity, and I appreciate also that that board and the staff of the Service Foundation allowed us to essentially move in and take over for a few months, and it allowed us to move very quickly in establishing a fund. And 2/3 of the funding was to support small businesses through loans, and 1/3 of the funds were to support individuals who had lost their jobs. And we went out and began to recruit a group of board members who had expertise in raising money, expertise in financial affairs, and the management of foundations, people from the city and the county, some who were retired, actually from the private sector, because we knew that the rest of us who were still working were all in reaction mode and trying to respond in a real-time way through our own jobs as well. So all of those folks came together, and we then went to the experts in these fields for individual assistance. We chose the Buncombe County Health and Human Services to serve as the administrator of those funds, because who better? Who knew that market better than anyone else? And for the small business loans, Mountain Bizworks, which seems to have been everywhere during this coronavirus, thank goodness, we were very pleased to have them work with us. The results, as we'll see on the next slide, we have raised $1,375,000 between March and August. While we're not actively fundraising any longer, we're still available to take funds and be able to redeploy them, because we will be having loans paid back over time, and we'll be able to reuse those dollars. As I said, 200,000 from Buncombe County, 100,000 from the city of Asheville, and then over $1 million from the community, which I just think is, it's evidence of what a special community this is. When, that was 1,176 donations, and those were from individuals, corporations, foundations, anonymous gifts ranging from $5 to large sums. So I really appreciate this community's support of their neighbors during this time that has been so rough on everyone. On the next slide, you'll see that our goal was to support 1,000 individuals and 100 businesses, and we achieved that. We had more than 1,000 households served with an average of $432 payment being made on their behalf. And Philip Harden is gonna tell you a little bit more about that in a moment. And our business loan program, 92 loans were made out of 218 that were submitted. And if you look at that job retention number, 674 jobs were retained. As you well know, if we were doing an economic development announcement about, that had 674 jobs, we would be celebrating it from the rooftops. So I really appreciate the work that was done. Philip, where are you? If you're in a...
Philip's virtual.
Philip's gonna be virtual. Good for him. And Philip has been a great representative of the Health and Human Services Department for us.
All right. I want to talk just a little bit about the individual assistance program that we were charged at HHS to do. And in essence, I'd be remiss not to thank all the staff who participated in this from HHS, and actually county staff also. It was quite an undertaking to do in a short period of time. Really, our goal was kind of to be a bridge for folks who were newly unemployed, and a bridge to hopefully them starting to receive unemployment insurance and those kind of things. And I think we were very successful with that. But as you'll see on this slide, the vast majority of the dollars that we provided in individual assistance were in housing. And a lot of that is driven by, you know, high cost of housing in Buncombe County. Next was utilities, and then a few other assorted payments were made. We didn't have a lot of requests for food, but I think some of that was because our food assistance applications at HHS increased almost 1,000% during this time. And so we did quick turnaround on those applications, and we're processing food applications within anywhere from five to seven days. So the next slide will show you where the, what zip code the money was spent in. And I think it's a pretty even distribution across all of Buncombe County. By far, by and large, 2A806 was by far the largest, with 26% of the dollars spent in that zip code, and next was 2A803 at 10.5%. Next slide. And this is the demographic breakdown of the folks that we served with One Buncombe Funds. We served, 76% were white, 12.5% were black or African-American, and 8.6% were Latino, and then various other smaller percentages.
Philip, thank you for your work on this. The staff at DHHS did such a great job when they were in the midst of dealing with a whole different set of crises as well. I'd like to introduce Matt Raker from Mountain Bizworks to take you through the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Kit. And good evening again, Matt Raker with Mountain Bizworks. First of all, just want to thank the commissioners again for your vision and really stepping up to support our small businesses across the county. And just to emphasize, when, the timing of this was so important. When One Buncombe Fund was established, this was right as the bottom was really dropping out, and we had no idea where it was going here. We knew that there was a federal response that was gonna be on the way, but we knew standing up a new federal program was gonna take two, three, four months for some of that relief to actually get to the businesses that needed it most. And here, we had an opportunity to partner as a community and move with speed and provide some relief. And so it's been a real honor for Mountain Bizworks to be able to assist with this program. Here, you can see a distribution of those 92 loans broken down by business size. And so the vast majority of these have gone to very small businesses. So those were the ones that needed it most, and we're having the hardest time accessing credit from commercial credit sources. So you can see that 60% of the beneficiaries had five or fewer employees, and 94% had 20 or fewer employees. You'll go to the next slide. Also wanted to look at, you know, speed, but also making sure that we really distributed this across the county and reached a lot of those businesses that were in most of need and were having a hard time accessing other relief resources. So you can see 29% of the borrowers or minority-owned businesses in the area, and that's compared to the red line there is 10% of businesses in the county are minority-owned, per census data. And then 65% of beneficiaries were to women-owned enterprises, and as compared to 47% of businesses, establishments in the county that are owned by women. So really wanted to do that, and then made sure that we reached every zip code in the county. We were really pleased to be able to do that and to get good interest from across the county. To that effect, I just really want to make sure that we thank our... To that effect, you know, just really want to make sure that we thank our partners in doing this. This was really a collaborative effort from the county and county staff, the city of Asheville, all of the local individuals and businesses that supported, the Buncombe County Services Foundation and the board of One Buncombe Board was, has been terrific, and then the other small business partners, which really, you know, we helped administer, but everyone was, was there to marshal, to get the word out, help us understand what the resources were, and to be able to apply and qualify for this assistance. So we've got a couple examples of clients that benefited from this, and I know they were going to attempt to call in. And so the first one we've got is Pam Granger Gale, who's the owner of Magic Studios, and do we know if she's on the line?
Is it time? Okay. Hi, I'm Pam Granger Gale, first-time business owner of Magic Studios. The stress of owning a business during the pandemic is nothing like I have felt ever. I know that speaks for many small business owners here in Asheville. I started Magic Studios in 2018 as an art teaching studio for community residents and visitors to Asheville to experience our art community. For locals, I hope they would find a home and an artist to expand their creative skills. In January 2020, we were set to greatly expand in our third year of operation. Well, then March, and the pandemic happened and everything shut down. I had to regroup after a time of worrying and wringing my hands. I began applying for funds to help me survive. Rent and utilities were of paramount importance. I applied for just about every fund out there, looking for the puzzle pieces to fit to support my business. When I received the One Buncombe Fund loan, one major piece of the puzzle was filled and my anxiety level subsided. I was able to breathe, knowing that while I could not have in-person classes, I had the financial support I needed to pay rent, utilities, and insurance on my studio space. Additionally, One Buncombe Fund money has helped me prepare the studio for socially distant, safe classes again with cleaning, sanitizing, and disinfecting supplies. Ballgroup classes restarted on August 1st. Thank you to the Buncombe County Commissioners, Mountain Bizworks, and all of the other forward-thinking entities involved in garnering the funds to support small businesses like mine. I have a different level of peace of mind in this new economy post-COVID. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Pam, for being a small business leader in our community. I believe we also have Stephen Smith, the owner of MS Lean Landscaping. Is he on the line?
I don't think he's here.
Okay. So I'll share just really quickly. He sent me his remarks, and he said, he let me know this afternoon he had worked, may have to work late. So he, so Stephen submitted this comment. First, thank you, Buncombe County Commissioners, for the opportunity to receive assistance from the One Buncombe Fund. Working with Mountain Bizworks, they assisted me in obtaining the fund during a hard time for small businesses and especially black businesses. Through the fund, I've been able to keep my employees working. It came in a much-needed time when several of my commercial clients had to prioritize certain contracts that they were able to keep, as the funds were able to help keep me laying off employees and even giving me the capability to employ more individuals as new clients came on. Thank you again, and I hope to see more assistance from Buncombe County Commissioners concerning black businesses, for in these economic hard times, black businesses suffer the most and do not receive as much assistance to sustain their business. So thank you, Stephen, for sharing that. We can go to the next slide. So this was really some of the first relief funds that we were able to deploy, and it really paved the way to be able to leverage other programs and through the partner network, really be able to marshal more resources to area business, to the business community. And here's just some of those. You're going to hear about the Jobs Recovery Fund in just a minute, the SBA PPP program. We were also able to expand access to that beyond what was able to be done through commercial banks. And then the North Carolina Rapid Recovery Program, which is still available for anyone who may have ongoing needs, so I would encourage people to look at that as we move forward. But One Buncombe really helped to be the catalyst for a lot of this work, and you can see the, the impacts there have been quite meaningful for, for our community. And, and, you know, in, in all of this was, this was around saving jobs, helping businesses be resilient through the pandemic, and helping us be able to recover faster, because we know if we can keep those businesses healthy in there, that we'll really be able to recover faster and get back to being really full employment and being a great community going forward.
Excellent.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Mountain Bizworks does a great job and is an important partner of ours. So the next slide shows what's next. We're trying to keep our eye on what's happening in the community, as we have had to through this entire process, as, as have you, and we'll be making some decisions, because some of the money will begin to be paid back in fall. At, we're, we're hopeful that every bill will be paid back, but we don't know. So we're going to watch and see what happens, and the board is committed to reinvesting those dollars in the most appropriate way. So we're, we'll be looking at, at options, whether it's more individual relief or it's additional business relief, but because it's paid back over time, it won't be a lot of money initially. So we're just going to have to play it by ear in that regard. And on the next slide, you'll see the, the logos of some of the organizations that stepped up first and in a big way. All of these provided over $50,000, and, and that was super helpful in getting other people interested in what we were accomplishing. And I can't say enough good things about your staff as well, because we did this very, very quickly, and it was at a, at a comfort level. I'm not sure anybody had great comfort, except for, we knew we had excellent financial support, having the CFO for the county serving as part of the board, and we, and, and I know that there were days that I pushed, pushed folks to their limits, so I really appreciate them having stepped up, and, and I actually miss seeing them on a regular basis. It was multiple times a day, every day for a while there. Do you have any questions for us? Well, if not, just want to say thank you again for being leaders in the community. We really appreciate your support.
Thank you, thank you for serving on this, Kit. All right, and now we're going to have some additional information on the Tourism Jobs Recovery Fund as well, I believe. And so Chris Kavanaugh and Noah Wilson will be talking to us in further detail about these efforts. Hey, Chris.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners and Chairman Newman, to present to you this evening. I'm Chris Kavanaugh. I'm the interim executive at the Explore Asheville Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm pleased to provide an opportunity to present an update on the Buncombe County Tourism Jobs Recovery Fund. I'd like to introduce Noah Wilson of Mountain Bizworks. I promise we didn't coordinate this as an advertisement for Mountain Bizworks, but I would be the first person to give one. We are very lucky to have Mountain Bizworks in the community. They have been a very valued partner in this process. They greatly expedited the process of getting money into the hands of applicants as quickly as possible. All of the funds, from the fund have now been dispersed, and Noah Wilson will provide an update to you now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, I'm presenting the Buncombe County Tourism Jobs Recovery Fund, and the awards been under that fund. If we go to the next slide, please. So the purpose of this fund was, is to preserve and safely reopen the region's unique and diverse small business ecosystem and protect tourism-related jobs. So that's kind of to center the fund, what we're trying to do with that fund. I think it's important to understand, that's kind of how we established this, and everything can kind of float out of that. If we could go to the next slide, please. And again, this was under the Explore Asheville TDA. And so I think this was, this timeline is a good idea of sort of the rapid pace of work under this program. So the bill was signed into law, and the program's announced 10 days before it opened applications, including all the kind of background details, how all the process would work, and all the online elements, all the policy involved therein. Applications closed 15 days later, with 444 applications, we're seeing 13 and a half million dollars, and over $37 million in total reopening costs. And so again, a lot of need for this money. Applications were reviewed and scored 10 days later, and we got final funding slated announced 90 days after that. Awards were all notified. We announced the grant awards just five days after that, executed and funded everything by the 30th of June, so less than two months. All money was out. Next slide, please. You can see we had a lot of applicant support, was a huge part of our work, from email, email lists and attendees across lots of webinars, a lot of coaching sessions with our partner organizations. I want to really give a thank you to SCORE, the Small Business Center, AB Tech, SPTDC, and the Western Women's Business Center for providing one-on-one support, because we could not do so as a granting agency. We published a lot of FAQs and translated everything to Spanish, so it would be broadly available to the community, including the application forms themselves. Next slide, please. So it's important everyone understands the eligibility criteria for the fund and kind of what we're, you know, this is all based off of and flows from the language and the legislation. So they had to provide a direct, in-person service or tourist experience, and be doing so before the end of 2019. Does not provide lodging in any way in whole or in part. We knew we had to be a tourism-based business, so that was established was 20% or more of revenues came from tourists, and had to have at least two and no more than 200 FTE jobs in order to be eligible, which is an important detail to note here. Also had to report six months and one year after receiving the award, so that first report will come up in a little bit. Only use funds for safely and successfully reopening and resuming normal operations in Buncombe County. So again, if they was business with multiple different outlets, some ins, not in, not in the county, had to be all in Buncombe that funds were spent. And also must agree to a public announcement, the business's name, award amount, number of jobs supported, which was reported in aggregate. Next slide, please. And this all then flowed into an application evaluation, and so we evaluated these on tourism impact, number of jobs supported, financial impact of COVID-19, the reopening plan, reopening budget. Want to note the reopening plan, actually asked a series of questions for each business of how they reopen successfully and sustainably and be able to remain open for at least one year under the program. Financial sustainability, looking at, you know, how do we know we can be confident this will work long-term? The location was kind of broadly across the entire county, not just in Asheville, and I got just understanding, ownership information as well about local ownership, minority ownership, and women-led ownership. Next slide, please. So a quick run-through of the awards, I will not be going through each one of these, there's too many to list right now in this, in this meeting, but they're certainly all available online. Just going to give you some broad demographic statistics. Next slide. So $5 million in funding was granted, with 394 grants awarded, ranging between $2,000 and $30,000 per entity. So again, no more than $30,000 per each EIN. 4,787 jobs were retained, recovered, and created through this program.
Wow.
With 283 full grants, and then 111 micro grants, which were a more streamlined process for small businesses, may have a burden from, going through a more complicated process. Next slide, please. You can see in our terms of awards by sector, they range from agritourism, arts and entertainment, to bakeries, cafes, breweries, outdoor recreation establishments, restaurants, retail, spas, tours, weddings, events. We really wanted to get the broad spectrum of all the kinds of businesses that may represent this industry, and also to have product diversity and balance across sectors. We have a more detailed NACs code report is all available, if y'all want to see that. Next slide, please. And also you can see here that 90% of the funds are businesses with less than 25 employees. So again, mostly much of very small businesses and enterprises in the community. And one thing I will note is you'll see a bit of a skew on the kind of detailed statistics, where some of the very highest business, job numbers, companies had slightly smaller awards, often because they have multiple outlets, multiple EINs awarded with them there. So you'll see, like for example, Biscuit Head, multiple, multiple, you know, EINs, multiple awards, but no more than 50K max. Next slide, please. So what about the numbers? So we had some benchmarks set through our contract with the TDA, that at least 10% of awards go to minority-led businesses, 50% to woman-led businesses, and no more than 85% to awards in Asheville. And we beat all these numbers, or met all these numbers, which we're really proud of, especially we managed to, 18% of the awards minority-led businesses, 55% woman-led businesses, to meet our kind of broad community goals. Next slide, please. So this is the fun part, talking about kind of additional needs and what else we can be doing in the community, what else we saw through the application process, through the technical assistance provided, to the companies that were there, we heard from our coaches and our reviewers. A few really key items. The first is that we need to prioritize as a community the startup and growth of tourism-related small businesses, own people of color. It really is remarkable when you realize how few businesses there are in this community owned, especially by people, by, by, by black or African-American individuals, who tap into the multiple billions of dollars flowing here through tourism. And so we have to think about what can we be doing to support the growth of businesses, because this is a huge part of our economy here. And without those businesses in place, tapping into that, we lose opportunity for a whole part of our community. Another one was supporting programs to assist sole proprietors. Again, you need to have two FTEs to be part of this program. A lot of sole prop businesses don't have access to funds through, through some of our bigger federal programs as well. They're kind of being left out right now. We try to find ways to support them, especially because 80-plus percent of minority-owned businesses are sole proprietors. Finally, looking beyond dollars as well, we can kind of list here of some of the key things that people ask for and helping beyond just money. PPE and safety, broad community support, shared marketing and PR, technical trainings, HR and staffing assistance, there's a lot of things we can all do as a community to help support these businesses besides just giving them money. I think we're doing a lot of that right now with our partner agencies, and we need to do so even more in the months to come. Next slide, please. I have some quick updates. So again, all the funds are out and dispersed. Next progress report is due the 31st of December, the final report's due in June of next year. We're doing continued monitoring throughout that period of time, looking for closings. Someone closes, asking them, hey, like, what kind of, like a what happened? How are things going? What's happening next for you in entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial journey? Let's make sure the funds are properly used, and if not, we'll bring some of the funds back to be redistributed appropriately. Leveraging other relief is a big thing, too. Again, if people access PPP, Recovery Loans, et cetera, One Buncombe Fund, encourage them to use that as well, to leverage these funds. And it's worth noting that these funds really are able to do things that, things that PPP cannot. So PPP is a very limited program, it's a very powerful program, but you can't buy equipment, you can't buy safety items, you can't buy PPE, all these things can't come through that program. And so this was really kind of like leveraging many more millions of federal dollars very effectively through the, through this program. We've also encouraged local sourcing throughout the people in this program, see if they're in their contract, do their best to source locally to increase the multiplier effect of these dollars spent here. And again, continue to ask, what can we as a community do to help our businesses reopen successfully and stay open? It's going to be a long fall and winter. Be thinking constantly about what are we doing to make sure we can support these folks throughout that period of time, hopefully in the next term we can reopen again. Next slide, please. Some closing here, these are kind of our vital stats, 5 million local grants, 394 businesses reopened, 4,787 jobs. Happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have some great testimonials from people coming up who are some of the business centers who are benefited by the program.
I've got some comments, but I want to wait till we hear the testimonials.
Okay. I know we have...
I am. Thank you so much.
So here's Gail.
I, you can hear me? Okay, this is a little strange. Oh, I am calling in from Zebulon Artisan Ales, and we were one of the lucky recipients of the TDA Tourism Jobs Recovery Fund Grant administered by Mountain Bizworks. And I wanted to thank Noah Wilson, Chris Kavanaugh, Noah with Mountain Bizworks, Chris with Explore Asheville, and also Jill Belcher, along with the delegation that helped push this legislation through and allowed this grant, this fund to be created. Our brewery has been open for four years, and it's a small mom and pop company, and I just personally, it's a, it's a half-female-run business, and I appreciate this opportunity to formally thank you guys for this grant award. This grant means that we're able to weather this pandemic with safety and grace. Without these funds, it would have been a real struggle for us to remain a viable business. We would have done everything possible to remain in business, because we believe in what we're doing, and we love being a part of this business community. It's a real pleasure, and anyway, it's our pleasure to be able to do this. And this grant, it's not only enabled us to remain in business as we were before the pandemic, but it's also allowed us to creatively and branch out as to how we can presently and... presently and continue moving forward into the future, continue to remake our business in order to remain safe and viable. Our brewery, Zebulon Artisan Ales, is a small mom and pop organization. It runs on positive word of mouth from our loyal customers from all over the country, really, and as well as our strong reputation for stellar, excellent quality beer produced by owner and brewer Mike Karnowski. He's also my husband. This funding is helping us stay resilient during these turbulent times by easing the financial burden of being a small business, which two of your speakers said so eloquently, and I'm not coming close to the eloquence that they expressed, but I want to remain short. So we hope to remain relevant and productive for many years to come. And it's such a boost, what a boon to have people looking out. You know, we're just not alone in dealing, we're all in this together, and having you guys looking out for these really actual small businesses is a, I can't thank you enough. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. Next up, I'm going to have Dwayne Barton from Hoogers International, following him, Lori Coatsy.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to receive these funds. It's very, this is a very challenging area to be African-American and try to start a business, particularly in the tourism industry. So this money will help, you know, jumpstart our efforts to keep this story alive and then take part of the money that we make from this to tell this story to invest back into these areas that could use some additional capacity through the arts, the environment, and social enterprise.
Thank you, Dwayne. And next up is Lori Coatsy.
Hi, I'm Lori Coatsy. I'm the Executive Director at the Black Mountain Center for the Arts, and we are so very grateful to have received this grant. I was asked to speak a little bit about what we're doing with the funds. And generally, we're spending this grant money in two main areas. One is increased security, safety, and sanitation, and the second is marketing. We need people to know that we're open, we need the visitors in Black Mountain to come in and purchase art and enjoy our wonderful facility. And so we have used some of the funds for additional signage, boosting social media posts, mailings, rat cards, things like that. And it's working. The good news is, is we've had a good steady flow of visitors in the last few weeks, and they're buying art, yay. And we're also using it for improved safety, buying things like touchless thermometers so that when children came to summer camp, we could ensure they weren't running a fever. Once we're allowed to open our dance studio and increase our classes back to normal numbers, those thermometers will come in very handy. Things just like sanitizers and more cleaning support, custodial support. We're currently researching air purifiers and what we need to put in our theater and our dance studio to increase the safety of the airflow in those spaces. It was a real pleasure to work with Mountain Bizworks. We're so very grateful the funds were available and to be able to work with that entity, they were very responsive to questions and needs. And I just want to say thank you again. We are, we are hanging in there at the Black Mountain Center for the Arts. This combined with paycheck protection meant I didn't lose my job, nor did the other one and a half staff members we have. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori. And that's a great example of how these programs combine to kind of make the whole thing work. And I know that there's one more testimonial, I think KP, we're going to, she just headed out. It's okay. So we have a lot more testimonials. Oh, and Sarah, come on up. Sarah Wells Roland from the Village Potters.
Hello, I'm the owner of the Village Potters Clay Center in the River Arch District here in town, and we have 14,000 square feet, 14 employees, two of whom are full-time. And with the closure, we were in a very precarious situation. I know y'all know this, but certain businesses specifically in the arts, and it's hard to get business loans. So we are personally vulnerable in this situation. Everything was borrowed against our own home and land. And so we felt very strongly that however we were going to survive this, we couldn't have any more debt. And so we've been trying so hard to generate funds that don't have to be paid back because we're already paying large amounts. So we did a fundraiser right at the closure, and we raised $55,000 selling Vessels of Hope, and it got us through the first three months. And I was starting to move into a panic mode of what are we going to do now? I do have idle funds, but I just do not feel like I can use them and survive. But it is there. And PPP was great for eight weeks, but as you all know, this is going on a long time. So when this grant became available to give us funds to actually use that money on the reopening, when the staff is coming back in, we're teaching, we're an education center, and we teach classes in the community here, and we have people that come from all over the United States to study with us. We have an advanced ceramics program. And so we had to give back over $50,000 in refunds when this happened. So it's been a difficult time, but when the grant came in and I had trouble with the application and Noah worked with us at like midnight in the night, thank you, Noah, I'm never going to forget how good he was to us. When this grant came in, it's been a breath of air to get to another length of time, and we are going to start another fundraiser. And I just want to thank the work that you've done to make this possible for businesses like ours. We are mostly women, there's 14 women and one man, and he's pretty amazing to hang with all of us. It's my husband and I that own the business, and we just want to thank you for the work you've done. We want to thank Mountain Bizworks, and the fact that its grant money is just absolutely substantial in our surviving. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah. And I think this really speaks to how unique these funds are. Again, so this is a national-scale grant fund, and I think it's, like Portland, Oregon's equivalent fund is $2 million. So this community and the TDA really stepped up in a huge way to support businesses that otherwise just couldn't have made it, and to do things that PPP and other federal loans weren't able to do. I think that's really, and that's a testimonial to what we can make happen, when we show up as a community for one another and for the entrepreneurs who make this place what it is. Happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for being here. Any questions?
I just got a couple of comments. I, I appreciate y'all coming and presenting, and Mountain Bizworks, you know, y'all, y'all just knocked it out of the park. I mean, you really did. I mean, to, to move and, and make such a difference so swiftly in the community with the timeline that you had. And, you know, my name was mentioned, so I want to just kind of give my, my involvement in this. As a member of the, a non-voting member of the, of the TDA, when the pandemic happened, you know, the, I think all, all community members, you know, you know, people of service had, you know, what can you do? What could we do? How, how could, how could we help? And then just through some conversations with Jim Muth and the Hotel Association, you know, Stephanie Brown, Gary, Gary Phobin, and, you know, you know, there was a thought that, you know, there's something we can do. And speed was, was critical in this. And, and I reached out to Senator Edwards, and, and this was the result of all the collaboration, and we had to do it quickly, it was non-political, there was nobody looking for, you know, for credit, it just had to happen and had to happen quickly, and there was, and everybody was yes, 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 yes. And then the button was pushed, and, and so the local delegation and all the, you know, the legislature and people got on board in a hurry, and it was, I think, put in with some other, you know, funding across the state that was COVID-19 related, and, but it had to happen fast. And you, you hear the reasons. I mean, you know, the testimonies, you know, people couldn't wait. And so I think it's very, very important, particularly in this day and time, that, that we learn that we put aside, you know, our political differences, and we, we come together, we make things happen that are, that are for the betterment of the community, and we do it, we lock arms, and we do it quick. And, and who knows, maybe we can do this again, you know? If the need is there, but again, and I'm, you know, rock star job from Mountain Bizworks and, and what y'all were able to accomplish and with the professionalism and the speed and, you know, I can't say, give y'all too many accolades. If I had an award already prepared, I'd give it to you. But, and for all the public that came in tonight and spoke, God bless you, and, and I'm sure you're well on your way to, to quick recovery, and our thoughts are certainly with y'all. So thank you again.
Absolutely. And I wanted to say, if anybody, we're also committed to helping everybody through this program continue to be, be supported. So again, if anybody in this community needs help with their reopening, their pivoting, all the work to stay open and stay strong, we're here for you, and our community's here for you, too, and it's really powerful. It means a lot. So thank you all.
All right, thank you so much. All right, next up, we've got several public hearings. The first is a public hearing, public hearing on the Schedule of Values for the 2021 reappraisal, and Keith Miller is going to get us started on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So we continue the process to get the Schedule values for reappraisal 2021 approved. This will be our next step. At your last general meeting, regular meeting, I asked for you to set a public hearing for the meeting this afternoon, and I'll ask Mr. Chairman that if we could conduct that now, and then I will give you a little more information about how we move forward from this point. Okay, thanks. All right, so there's no action being taken, there's just a requirement for a public hearing.
Yes, sir. The, the public hearing just satisfies the statute. There is certain steps that we must go through to approve the Schedule values, and this is one of the steps, is that?
So I just, you know, we're going to talk about our public comment process in a little while. I just, I guess I wonder, would it, would it mess anything up on the schedule if we, because I think, I anticipate based on our pre-meeting discussion, we're going to, starting at our next meeting, have a process for people to really comment during public comment, during public hearings. Would it mess anything up on the schedule if we moved this to the next meeting in two weeks so that we could really do that? Because obviously people can't really comment on this tonight, and so I just, I'm asking, I don't want to mess up the schedule, I know you got a schedule you got to follow.
We did advertise it as such, we didn't get any comments on this specific item, but we did advertise that they could send us comments like they had in the past on other public hearings. But I'll have to ask him on the schedule.
And I will also turn to Mr. Frue here for just a second, because there is some things within the statute that says it must happen within a certain amount of time after a certain other trigger happens, another trigger needs to happen. So let me ask Mr.
Okay, and I'm sorry for not posing this question earlier, but it just kind of stemmed from our earlier discussion.
And I know working with the Assessors Office months ago, maybe late last year, to try to put together this timetable, and I'm just not prepared off the cuff, recommend changing what we've already put in motion.
Well, okay, I just wanted to ask the question. If there were a way to have a more meaningful public hearing, that'd be great. We are going to talk about public comment later, so if this is an, this is, this is a technical public hearing that has to be held, I guess I would just also say, we're going to very soon be having opportunities for folks to call into our meetings and give public comments in real time. So if this is an issue you're interested in, I think starting at our next meeting, that'll be easier to do. So we'll, we'll do that. But, um, all right, so we need to technically hold a public hearing, so that means I need to open it and then close it, right? So I'll officially open the public hearing on this item at 6:16 PM. Have we received any submitted comments for the hearing on this issue? Okay, all right. I'll close the public hearing at 6:17 PM. Does that satisfy the requirements for what we need to do tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Next in the process, I will be back in front of you at your next regular meeting on September 1 and ask you to adopt, that will take action on your part to vote to adopt the Schedule of Values. From that point, then we will, we will advertise that once a week for the next four weeks and give any citizen the ability to step up and file an appeal on those schedules if, if they so desire. I'll also tell you, Mr. Chairman, to satisfy your concerns, is that beyond public hearing? We're available anytime for the citizen to discuss what this process is, discuss the Schedule of Values. We are having town halls with the citizens, so there's a lot of opportunities beyond this that I'm open to be able to talk to the citizens about this process if they so wish.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Sure, thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the Indian Branch rezoning request, and Nathan Pennington is here to get us started on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. My name is Nathan Pennington, Planning Director. I have a short presentation for you on this item. And this is a request, as you mentioned, ZPH 2020 00011, the Indian Branch zoning map amendment. The hearing was properly noticed, advertised, and posted as such. African information is Rick Wren, Indian Branch LLC, represents unaddressed property off of Old US Highway 1923 and Smokey Park Highway in Candler. And the request is for CS to R3. And you'll notice right here on Smokey Park Highway, you'll see the guardrail, so the property is not accessed from Smokey Park Highway. It comes from Old US 1923, and I'll show you that here in just a second. While it's not currently served by public water and wastewater, Indian Branch is about the extent of MSD and could be served by both public water and sewer. As you can see in this map, the current zoning is CS, which is commercial service. The proposed rezoning is R3. We looked at the neighborhood consistency in evaluating this request. You'll see some slight differences here, since it is a downzoning request, the height does go down from 50 feet to 35 feet. This is a, this is a good image, bird's eye view of the property itself. To the north, you'll see Smokey Park, and to the south, you'll see Old US 1923. Just some slightly different bird eye images you'll see from a consistency standpoint, and to give you some information of the surrounding area, you'll see a number of manufactured home parks, there are some commercial uses in the area. To the west there, just west of the subject property, they built a new self-storage facility, and to the east, there's a vehicle repair center. Staff analyzed the proposal and found it is consistent with the Conference of Land Use Plan. The request was reviewed by the Planning Board, and they recommended approval unanimously on July the 20th, and with that, staff recommends approval as submitted. And I'm here for any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Nate. We do need to hold a public hearing on the rezoning request, so I'll open the public hearing at 6:20. Have we received any comments from the public on this item? Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing at 6:21. Commissioners, are any questions or motion? And we'll need two motions. The first will be a finding of consistency, and the second will be the rezoning itself.
So I'll make a motion to approve that the, the zoning change is, is consistent with our land use plan.
Second. Just motion, the second. Any other questions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and is there a motion to approve the rezoning to R3?
So.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and next up is the Watkins rezoning request.
Thank you again, Mr.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, members of the public watching virtually. This request is ZPH 2020-00006, the Watkins zoning map amendment. And I will add that Ms. Watkins is joining us in the audience right now.
Welcome.
The hearing was properly noticed, posted, and notices were sent out accordingly. The applicant is Mary June Watkins. The properties are four small properties located on US 70 with 2254, 2256, and two unaddressed properties. The context of the area, in the first slide and the bird's eye view, you will see the East Haven project, which is under construction. The four properties are just to the side of it. And in the bottom, it provides more of a view looking north from the Ingalls side. So, the properties are just to the east of East Haven on the commercial corridor. The property is currently zoned R3 and the request is to go to CS, which is commercial service. There is public water and sewer in the area. This is a zoning map of what it would look like if the request is honored and granted. It would simply finish out the commercial corridor that is intact along US 70. Staff analyzed the request. We find it to be consistent with the Conference of Land Use Plan. Some slight differences here, mainly it allows the height to go higher, which on a commercial corridor, you would want to see that with commercial uses anyway. Some some better shots. This also gives you a pretty good look at what East Haven's looking like. And that is moving very close to completion these days. So, just moving around cardinal directions, north, southeast and west.
That thing's flying.
Yeah.
There's the western view, Ingalls to the top and to the north.
I agree.
Land use analysis. Staff has found this request to be consistent with our land use plan as well. We analyzed the following details. The planning board also recommended approval as submitted. Six to zero vote on July the 20th. Staff recommends approval. And again, Ms. Watkins is with us in the audience. Should you have any questions of her?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pennington. All right. We need a public hearing on this as well. So, I'll open the public hearing at 6:24 PM. Have we received any written comments on this?
No.
Okay. And is there anyone present who would like to comment during the public hearing? That's totally fine. All right. We'll close the public hearing at 6:25. Commissioners, again, we need a motion to approve or to, on the consistency, and then we'll need a motion on the rezoning itself. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Watkins request is consistent with the land use plan.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And there's, is there a motion to approve the rezoning to CS?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning to CS.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate it. And Ms. Watkins, thanks for being with us. Okay. Ms. Pender, do you have any items to report under county manager updates?
The only thing I wanted to share quickly is, as you may recall, last year, we moved into HRA's health risk assessments for employees on our healthcare plan. It is time to do that again. So, we will be posting an article for the organization tomorrow, starting September 29th. And for two weeks, we would have health risk assessments. And that would be how you get your discount for the 21 calendar year. So, I just wanted to make sure that I mention that to you. We're doing it by appointments only, not Watkins, because of social distancing. They're 10-minute appointment, 10-minute appointments. So, you want to make sure that I brief you guys in case you do want to get your appointments as soon as we put it up on schedule for tomorrow.
All right. Thank you for the update. Any questions? All right. Was that it? Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we come to discussion about our process for appointing. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. Let's go ahead and take up the process for public comment first. So, at our briefing meeting this afternoon, we had a discussion about how we're going to handle public comment going forward as we're still in this, using protocols for safety and social distancing. And let me summarize what I kind of heard from that and see if this is something the commission is in agreement on. The recommendation was that we will, and we appreciate the staff's input on this, they outlined an approach whereby members of the public who wish to comment during county commission meetings can, through Zoom, call into the county commission meetings. They will not be visually displayed. But members of the public can remotely call into the meetings and provide comments live to the county commissioners in a manner very similar to what we've traditionally done, although they won't be physically standing in the room. They can talk to us directly. Members of the public will have up to three minutes to provide comments to the commissioners just as they would in our traditional meetings. I believe the recommendation is that we will take this public comment up, starting at 5:15. So, we'll convene the meeting, we'll have the pledge of allegiance and likely approve the consent agenda probably by that point. But then, then we'll take public comment and members of the public can comment on any items on the agenda or speak to the commission about any items that they wish to talk to us about. And we will take up to one hour of public comment at that meeting. So, we'll accommodate as much as we can at that point. If there are more folks than that who have signed up, then unfortunately, we, you know, we won't be able to get to everyone. But we will take a full hour of public comment if there's that many people who sign up. So, that's kind of what I heard at the briefing this afternoon. If, you know, we can revisit this in the future. But is there a motion to approve adopting that procedure for our coming meetings?
So move.
All right. We've got a motion in the second to modify the county commissioners' procedures for public comment during the COVID-19 health emergency, at least for the time being, until the commission revisits it if we want to make any modifications.
Just a couple of quick comments, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that it goes on the record. I believe I'm correct. Lamar can correct me if I'm wrong. But that after three minutes, the person that's calling in will be muted. So, it's not like here where, you know, we get a red light and then the chairman says, okay, you got to wrap it up. I mean, in three minutes, you'll be wrapped up because it'll be muted. Is that correct, Lamar? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. So, that, so that would happen. Other thing that I, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask a clarification on that? So, we'll, of course, we'll review the rules with everyone to remind them of that.
Beginning, okay.
At the beginning. Is there any way to give them a kind of a signal that their time's almost up? Or is that not practical? Because it's obviously kind of harsh to just cut someone off without a warning. Is there any way to give them a little bit of a heads up that your time's almost up?
I will defer to Matt.
Okay.
I'm not sure. Matt, is there a way for you to?
I'll figure it out.
Okay. If there's a way we can give them a warning, you know, 30 seconds, 30 seconds, then that'd be great, just so they, they don't get totally surprised.
Other than the Jeopardy song. But anyhow, y'all get that later.
Okay.
And the other thing I want to say is, and I think a lot of us were for the, I want to thank Vice Chair Presley for bringing this up a few last meeting or the meeting before when we've all been trying to figure out how to pull it off and, you know, difficult time. And I appreciate the commission figuring out a way to do it. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. All in favor of the motion to amend protocols for public comment to enable live in-person calls via Zoom? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Now, Commissioners, let's move on to the boards and commissions interview processes. We also discussed this item at several recent meetings, including our last one. And we got a recommendation from the staff that the issue is, the issue before is for boards and commissions, which of those will the county commission itself routinely interview all the applicants or make decisions about all the applicants that will be interviewed for those boards? And for which of them will our existing boards and commissions make recommendations for appointments to new positions? And the general recommendation that's come forward is that for boards that are advisory in nature and do not have inherent decision-making authority, that generally speaking, the protocol will be that the boards and commissions will make recommendations to the board of commissioners for openings that come open on those boards. Commission will still have the final decision on that. And if there are situations where the board feels like we want to do some interviews, like it doesn't tie our hands in that regard, but that the general, most frequently used process will be recommendations will come to us for a decision by the board from those boards themselves. However, the boards that are quasi-judicial or which have actual decision-making authority would be, we will not ask those boards and commissions for recommendation. The board of commissioners itself will decide who we want to interview and appoint. All right. So, that's the recommendation that's in front of us. And we have a list of all of our boards and commissions on the agenda packet identifying which ones are advisory, which ones are governance boards, and which ones are quasi-judicial boards. So, again, only the advisory boards would be primarily led from the boards and commissions themselves. I had a couple of, couple of thoughts I wanted to share, and then we'll open it up for everyone else, too. I'm supportive of this approach. I did have, there were a couple, just in terms of looking over the list, there were a couple that I thought we might want to consider moving into the review by the board. And those are boards which, although they do not have the technical final decision-making authority, they do, as part of their role, specifically recommend funding. And in some cases, some fairly significant funding. One of the, so the two that come to mind are the Strategic Partnerships Committee, the Asheville Housing Consortium, and actually also the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. So, while they don't have the final say-so on funding, they do deliberate on investments of taxpayer funding and make recommendations to us. As we heard from the Strategic Partnership Committee earlier this evening, they're doing a great job. And the commission accepted 100% of their recommendations. And I think the nature of those advisory boards making recommendations is that the vast majority of the time, what they recommend will be adopted. Because we all know they've spent a lot of time on it and know all the details of it. So, kind of going against recommendations from processes like that is going to be pretty unusual. So, it's almost, it's, it's pretty close to decision-making authority from practical standpoint. So, my only suggestion would be to maybe take those where there's specific funding recommendations and have the commission also appoint those members. That's my only comment. Other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this approach. So, what are, what are other commissioners' thoughts on this process?
So, Chairman, if we're going to do that, does somebody need to go through that list? You know, I'm not challenging your, your memory, but are those the only two? I mean, I don't see the Health and Human Services Board on here.
It is. It's under governmental. So, it would remain with the board.
Did I just totally, I totally missed it.
There's a page, scrolling.
Oh, keep scrolling.
Keep scrolling.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I'm happy for us to look at this for a few more minutes. Those were the ones that, to me, stood out as like making funding recommendations. And, okay, early child, okay, early childhood education.
Does Parks, Greenway and Recreation Advisory Board make funding recommendations to the board?
Well, they don't, you know, you know, other boards might from time to time. But these, these boards have dedicated funding that's associated with their, you know, their existence that every year, they will make in the budget or otherwise, very significant funding recommendations to the, to the board.
JCPC would fall under that as well, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
They have a dedicated funding source?
Yeah. It's state-level funding and they make local decisions about the administration of that.
But it's not Buncombe County funding?
Not our money.
And I'm not saying I'm against, I'm just, I'm just thinking.
It's state funding.
These others have, are basically appropriating Buncombe County general funds.
That's right.
And again, I'm not arguing against it, but just there is a maybe distinction there.
Yeah. I think, to me, the line would be if this is a body that's either has, and JCPC is actually making the decisions at that level of that entity. That doesn't, correct me, but that doesn't.
It does.
It does.
You do have to approve their budget.
Right. Okay. To me, the line would be if there's a funding out, if there's a funding recommendation that is very likely to become what we do, it would come to us. To me, less it, whether it was county or state funding, that would be less of a factor.
Okay.
So, I don't know. Somebody else is going to have to take a look at the list before we vote on it?
I think we can.
I mean, I'm okay with the process, what we're wanting to try to do. I just want to make sure that if there is, if there are boards where the, you know, there's direct funding associated with it, that we break them out. And I don't want to do it based on, you know, what I think or, you know.
Yeah. So, it's, you know, let's, maybe let's just, I mean, so it's just that the ones in question are the ones highlighted in blue, right? Those are the ones that we're in essence kind of delegating greater authority.
That's all. That's right.
So, it's just that list. And we, and, you know, we could, of course, we'll always reevaluate this in the future from sure. But those, I think it is, I don't think any of the other ones have that specific responsibility. And on the early childhood education, the way that's currently set up is that the board does appoint a certain number of members. But then the board, under their charter, they do have the authority to appoint additional members. Is that correct? Or does the board ultimately appoint all the members to it? It's just some of them are commissioners and others are residents.
We're new and we're actually figuring this out right now because we have our first vacancies.
Right.
The original process was that the three commissioners brought forth a slate of recommendations that the full board voted on. And we now have our first vacancies. And so, this question has actually been under consideration. The committee did go ahead and form an ad hoc team that would, that was, that is prepared to do interviews. But we, but there was an understanding that at this level, we were having this discussion and there wasn't yet clear guidance on the best way to proceed. So, it's a very relevant question. I mean, I will, I guess the part where we could probably just keep talking this through again and again.
We could, yeah.
The part that I keep coming back to is, to me, that's a great example of a board that there are committee members who have a lot of expertise about the work of the committee at this point and where it's headed and who are prepared to do sort of a screening level of interview and bring forth recommendations. And, and there's a very significant funding, set of funding recommendations attached to it. So, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm, I have some internal conflicts on that question, I guess. As we're talking it through more depth, Brownie, I understand why you want to have that interview process at this level.
And I, and I certainly appreciate your point. I mean, I think they would probably come up with great recommendations, you know. But there's also the reality that, again, the vast majority of the time, their recommendations will be approved. And I want to say rubber stamp because people look at, look at the recommendations. But it'll be, it'll be hard to go against them unless there's some really significant flag that's raised, which there usually won't be. So, I guess it's the combination of the fact that that's kind of the reality of how the budget process works. And then the board itself kind of makes the decisions about who's on the board. It just starts feeling quite removed from the commission's role in the process. So, we're technically making the decisions, but doesn't feel like we're having a real meaningful role in that. And especially over time, you know, right now, we've appointed a lot of these folks. But over time, like, we, we will, we will just be kind of approving recommendations from these groups.
So, if I can weigh in on some of the rationale behind how we looked at it, on the Affordable Housing Commission, because it is county representation on that board with commission representation, we felt that, I think there are three commissioners on that housing and there's three commissioners as well on the early childhood. So, we didn't move that to judicial or governance because there truly is no governance decision. They're talk about recommendations to you and you approve that. So, that's one of the reasons it stayed in the affordable housing, in the active under the advisory versus quasi-judicial because you had three representation from the board of commissioners on both of those boards. So, we didn't discuss the regional housing consortium. And that's because that's a joint board. You have city and county both. So, instead of having, there's no county commission representation, but that was more of a joint board. So, we felt that that recommendation still had to come to you guys. And I do want you to remember that even though they're making, they're screening the applications, you're still making the final decision.
Right.
you're still making the final decision on who gets seated on those, on that. And one thing that we can do is give you the whole list plus the screen list, and you can look at it that way. That way, you're not having to interview.
I can't think of any example of where it's ever not been approved. I really can't. All the years I've served on these boards.
On the recommendation or the.
On the funding recommendations. Because there's so much time to spend in those subcommittees that to like do something different would just, it would just turn the apple cart over, you know, in most cases.
I meant the recommendation for the actual committee member. They're still coming to you as recommendations, so you can actually broaden your pool. Or when you, once you got their recommendations, if you have two vacancies, you can ask for six or, and give you the opportunity then, screen them yourself. So there's options that you can look at as well.
Okay, what other commissioners' thoughts on this?
I think I'm warming up to the whole list the way it's written, actually. The, give me the, what the Q is. That's a quasi judicial, and then the G. Yeah, okay. Got that. Because all of these will come to us, and we will have the opportunity to turn them down either way, so. So I'm, are we supposed to make a motion on this?
We do need to approve this, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve it the way it's written.
All right, there's a motion, and a second. I will make a motion to, yes?
I just have a point of clarity. I think in your review earlier, you stated that if, or there wouldn't be any recommendation for the quasi judicial or the governance. Are they, do you want them to not? I know you still will interview, but do you not?
I want those boards at all to give any recommendations. I just want to make sure. I know you will still have the process of interviewing.
Yeah, I understand the question. So thanks, that's a good question. So what are people's thoughts? I'm fine with them making a recommendation with the understanding, but they won't do any interviews. Their interviewing process would be with the board, but I'm okay if they want to, you know, share their thoughts about qualified candidates.
I'll have no problem.
So do we have a question for the attorneys in the room? Do we have a statute issue on quasi judicial boards? For example, with them making a recommendation to us on those boards? Since they're different.
I mean, I think you could do it that way.
Okay, and no is fine. Thank you.
Okay.
See, I don't think we treat any of them differently, you know? If they want to recommend, they recommend.
Okay, and let's, is it okay if we incorporate that into the motion as a friendly clarification? Commissioner Beltrane?
I think that, let's look and make sure it's not in there.
Just so it's written down, because we're talking about it now, I want to make sure we get all this down on paper, so it's 100% clear for the future what we want people to do and we don't want them to do.
I think if you want to add language, it says that it is, that it is okay for any of the boards to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, understanding that the Board of Commissioners have the final authority for those appointments. I would be okay with that language if that, does that sound okay?
Yeah, and is the person who made this, who seconded it comfortable with that being part of the motion, just it's?
It is, but I would, I would like to maybe see if it could be a written recommendation and a reason as to why there, it's not just a name.
Not just an asterisk, by the way.
Not just an asterisk saying it's who recommended it. It's, there's something that comes with it that said, this is why we are, because we're recommending them.
Okay, are you fine with that? That they're invited to share a little commentary along with it?
Okay, read, read back what, what I gave you to the best of your ability, because I'm going to try to remember it to the best of mine.
I think you said that all boards can make recommendations with the caveat that the board does not have to accept the recommendations.
Okay, so, so I'm going to change that slightly, that all boards have the opportunity to make written recommendations to the commission, to the commission, with the understanding that the Board of Commissioners has a final authority in appointment.
And just another point of clarity.
You got that, remember it?
Yes.
Because I won't, you better write it down.
I got you. Just another point of clarity. When we do get recommendations, and I think Commissioner Penland asked about this not too long ago, I provided written recommendations in your packets today for appointments. And what we typically do is get those written recommendations, but we just asterisk those on the sheet that I give you. It's not that we take recommendations via just a name. We get written recommendations. We just transfer that into the sheet that we give you.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can provide those if we need to at all times.
I would just, you know, since we're putting that in the language, I would assume that we would want that written recommendation included in our, the board information that you give us. I mean, that's, would be my assumption. Then we can, we're good?
Go ahead.
I feel like maybe, I might have got myself a bit confused, but I feel like we've sort of missed, we're not quite getting to the point of what the recommendation that came forward was, which was that the advisory boards would conduct the interview processes and bring the final recommendations to us. We would retain the ability to conduct additional interviews if we wished, but that they would really have that responsibility. And then in the case of the governance and quasi judicial boards, that task would fall to us, although the boards could bring forward some supplemental information or recommendations if they wished.
I think that's right.
So I think that's, I hear that as a little different than the motion on the table.
I don't, that's what I heard as the motion. Do you hear anything inconsistent with it?
I don't, I don't think it's, I think the, I think the spirit of it is exactly the same.
What was the difference in your mind? Because I think the way you summarized it was very good summary of the motion as I heard it.
Then maybe it's just that, maybe, does anyone else want to chime in?
Well, let's just repeat it one more time. So it's like on the advisory boards, the advisory boards themselves will conduct the interviews for applicants and then make the recommendation to the board for who to appoint. On the governmental and quasi judicial, they will not conduct interviews. That will be the responsibility of the Board of Commissioners, although they can issue recommendations and provide commentary on the rationale for that.
So that's the motion on the floor.
I believe so.
It wasn't said that way, but that's the intent of the motion. Yeah, so I mean, you know.
Is that the substance of it, though? Is there anything different about, I just want to make sure we got the.
The only thing, okay, since.
Why don't we need to deliver to Lamar the clarity, and Stacy the clarity that they.
Clarity is not only, always one of our strong suits, but anyhow. And what you brought to us, or what staff brought to us, has that separates these boards and the advisory boards, what we're saying is that the advisory boards can make the interviews and make recommendations to the board with the understanding that the board has final authority in those appointments. That's the motion.
All right, I think we got it. So I want to make, I want to propose an amendment to the motion.
You're kidding?
Nope. And that's to move strategic partners, the Housing Consortium, and the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and Early Childhood Education into the list of groups that the commission would do interviews for. And I just articulated my reasons for why to do that a few minutes ago, but you know, the one other thing I would add, and this is, you know, and I don't want to, with these, doing these interviews is fun and interesting because you get to meet a lot of great people in the community, and people want to serve in these roles because they care about the community. It's a great and healthy process. I will say, though, that there are times when we are doing interviews that there can be conflicts of interest. You know, there are, there are issues that come up, and I think the commission's deliberation on some of those decisions has, we have made certain decisions because of those issues. And I believe that when we're talking about boards that spend hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars, I believe this board has, to have a oversight role that is meaningful. And I am concerned that we are stepping out of that if we delegate both the recommendations on the taxpayer funding and the appointment of the boards functionally out of our decision-making purview, even though we're technically making it. Just having served in this role for a long time, we are not going to, the board is not going to go against those recommendations. That's just the way it works because they do the detailed work, and it would frankly be a slap in the face to them unless there is a serious red flag that's raised. So for those reasons, I'm making that motion.
So give me the names again, Chairman?
Please.
Strategic Partners, the Housing Consortium, which is really a staff function, but again, I'd like for the commission to be able to think about who that is. The Affordable Housing Subcommittee, and that's actually just three commissioners at this point, so we are, I think we are doing that, you know? And the Early Childhood Education, I didn't put JCPC on that list. You can make an argument for it both ways, but it's not really our, it's not county taxpayer funding, so I kind of see a distinction there. So it's those groups. And, all right, that's the motion. That's the motion, that's the proposal for an amendment.
So Parks, Greenways, and Recreation Advisory Board wouldn't fall in the same category as what he's talking about?
No.
So are there others that should be in that category? Because my head is starting to hurt.
I don't think so.
There's other defunding allocations of $20.
And to put your mind at ease, JCPC, the positions are regulated by statute as well. There's only a couple of, yeah, committee members.
And I get there's arguments on both sides, but that's just where I'm at. So I've got, I've got, let me just ask, is there, is there a second to the motion? Because if there's not, we'll.
To your motion?
To my proposal for amendment. There has to be, to amend a motion, you have to have a, two commissioners who want to discuss the amendment. If there's not two, just, all right, there's a second, so we'll keep talking about it.
Okay, so you're amending my motion, because you can't make another motion. You have to amend my motion.
It's a proposal to amend your motion.
Okay. So I want to hear from the other commissioners on that before I'll agree to it.
I'll be honest, I'm okay. I think anything that deals with tax dollars needs to come before this commission. I mean, and we need to be the one that, that interviews those folks. I mean, that's just, and you know, that's, I just, that's just where I'm going to land on this. It's, that's a big thing that we're, we're asking, and ultimately, think about it, it will fall to us. Anything goes wrong, it's, it's this.
My only concern is I want to make sure that list is exhaustive, and, you know, does that mean we have to do that tonight? I don't know. I mean, is that the only four that should be on, that should be? I mean, you caught, you saw them, I mean, Chairman saw them, you know? And, you know, if we're going to have this discussion, I just soon make sure, because really what's, what's happening is that you're just making it a little bit tougher, the process on those four. That's not loosening my motion, that's toughening it.
It's just, well, I think, I mean, the main change we're making here is we are kind of formally delegating a lot of the process to the boards and commissions to kind of think about the future members who will populate them. And I'm just saying, on those, on those, to me, I'm not, I'm just not quite comfortable changing our process on those yet. I think this is overall a really good, this is a really good recommendation. I just, to me, I'd like to keep those with the board, at least for now. Again, we can evaluate this in the future, but that's.
It's almost like you're creating another category, which would be funding advisory boards that would fall with the governance and the quasi judicial boards.
That's, yeah.
And so we'd have purely advisory, which sort of are in the realm of policy, issue area, content, things like that. And then we'd have funding advisory boards, governance boards, and quasi judicial boards, all of which would fall under the purview of Board of Commission level interviews.
I think that's a good way of thinking about it.
So a question for, a question for the county manager on this. Should we have another color on here? That's kind of where I'm going. I'm getting ready, I'm getting ready to, I'm getting ready to punt this until, because I don't want, no disrespect for the Chairman, I don't want to rely on the Chairman's memory as to what boards are, you know, financial, you know, have financial attachments that we should be, be voting. I don't, I don't want.
The only one I wasn't familiar with would be the Regional Housing Consortium. I do know they have housing funds, so they, all four of them has funding responsibility that they would bring a recommendation forward. The regional consortium goes to that extra group, but yes, all four of those have a budget that they do recommend to the, to a governing body. So, and those are the only four left, other than the JCPC, which those positions are prescribed by statute. There's only one community member, I believe, and a teen member.
Are those, and those are the only ones that have a financial?
That would, that would have a budget to allocate, to give you recommendations to fund.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Also, just to remind you, you are not relinquishing the possibility to interview for any of these boards and commissions.
It's a hypothetical, it's a hypothetical authority.
Yeah, because my motion has that language in there already. All he's doing is changing, is adding those four.
I understand changing those boards and moving those, that's fine, but I just want to also, like I said, I just want to remind you that at any time, if you decide that one of these boards should be moved, and you thinking that you wouldn't be able to interview because it needs to be moved into a different category, you do have the ability to interview any of these boards at any time.
I understand, but I think boards kind of say, gosh, why are you doing this to us? You created these rules, and what did we do wrong? You know, we're working hard, we're interviewing great folks, and why are you singling our group out to step in and do the, I mean, I think it's, it's, again, I understand we have that technical ability, but I think it would rarely ever be exercised. All right. Any other comments from commissioners?
So is there, is there a better way to add those four? I mean, do they need to be another color? Or are there others that are, that have those financial ties that Chairman didn't have a problem with?
We can move those four, if, when you guys vote and agree, we can put those four in a different category that's called funding responsibility or some other title, and just have another description.
I would like to see that, so that it's not, again, no offense to the Chairman, but that it's not based on, you know, your memory and your thought that that is, those are, that's why I'm asking you, those are the only ones that are financial, that have those financial ties. Because what he's doing, that, that recommendation is strengthening my motion to have, have more interviews, basically.
Okay.
From a process perspective, what would we discuss? What would that mean from a process perspective? Are you saying move this to our next meeting?
No, I'm saying add those at, with yellow or whatever you want to. Add them, add them or change their color and put F beside of them for financial or fiduciary or whatever. And then what I would suggest, though, that we dig into this, and if there are others that we, that should be in the fiduciary category or F category or whatever it is, that, that staff come back to us and say, you need to change these because there's money associated with those two.
So the list on the A category, sir, those four, send recommendation of funding plus JCPC, those are the only five, and JCPC is statutorily required of the certain, the position serves in the role, so you don't have a lot of flexibility on who you appoint to that board. But to, but that, this list is then complete based on that.
So, so we're going to add those, and they'll have their own designation, and then that'll, I'll accept that as an amendment, and then we can vote on that. But I would just say in the spirit of this, that, you know, that needs to be checked and rechecked, and if there's others that should be in that financial category that we know later, okay? Don't have to do it now. Y'all just kind of keep us, keep this thing improving, okay?
That sounds good. Commissioner Presley, did you second the motion? Or Mr. Penland, did you? Do you accept that as a friendly amendment as well?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. I think we've got enough data at the moment. This, this idea's been incorporated as a friendly amendment. Further discussion?
And you've got that language in, on my part, right?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All in favor of the motion? If there's no other comments, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all for good consideration of this, and thank you to the staff for great recommendations on this as well. Okay, now we come to our boards and commissions' appointments. How timely. All right. And so, let's take these in the order they're written out in our packet here. The first is the library board. We have three positions available, two are reappointments. I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Linda Wilkerson and Kay Wall.
I'll second.
Any other commissioner's motion on this? Okay. Any other commissioner's motion on this?
Are we going to go on the others and go from one end to the other?
Well, my thought on this, you know, we typically do reappoint members in good standing. These members have good attendance. So I was thinking maybe we would make the decision on the two reappointments, and then we'll come to the decision about the, the appointment of the vacant seat after that. That's kind of was my thought process on, on the process. And that district would be, and that's, and that's the open seat in District Three. And we have two applicants for that, so we would make that decision next.
Okay.
Okay.
So you've got a first and a second, let's do it.
All right. All in favor of Linda Wilkerson for District One and Kay Wall for District Two. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For District, the District Three position, we have two applicants. Why don't we just start on one end, and let's just, let's just pull the board. Start with Commissioner Edwards.
Keely Knopf.
Keely.
Colleen.
Keely.
Keely Knopf.
Keely.
All right. Keely Knopf will be appointed to the District Three position. All right. Now we come to the Board of Vacancies. Now, this one might be a little bit more complicated.
Board of Adjustment?
There's, I'm sorry, Board of Adjustments, thank you.
Sorry. I like Board of Vacancies. Maybe we, so I want to make a friendly amendment to my last thing, to create that board.
Yeah, go ahead. All right. We need to create a Board of Vacancies as soon as possible.
Sure. But how could, but how could you fill it?
All right. So we interviewed a lot of these folks, great applicants, at a special meeting last week. And so we need to appoint four new regular members to the, to the board. Oh, and hang on, I know what you're going to say, Mr. Frew. Do we need to do what you were going to say first on these appointments?
It might just make it cleaner, because there's five people currently serving that we need to, in order to comply with our ordinances as authorized by state statute, we need to name those three members as regular members and two who have requested to be alternates.
Okay. Before we move on to this list, and does every, Michael, did you give everyone a copy of this memo?
I didn't, that was the only copy.
Okay. Let me, let me, just to clarify what Mr. Frew's referring to.
Chair, Chairman, could, since this quasi judicial board, could Mr. Frew come up and just let him walk us through what you were getting ready to go through?
Sure, sure. Yeah, Mr. Frew, please explain the members, the terms of the current members that we need to clarify.
Yeah, so what we're attempting to do here, since we have a lot of openings on the Board of Adjustment, you've conducted a bunch of interviews, it's our big chance to make sure that we're complying with our own ordinance. Over time, a number of people have been appointed to this board, and greatest care hasn't always been taken to designate whether or not they're regular members or alternates. So now we need to get into that to comply with our ordinance. The statutes authorize counties and cities to name alternates, and it's a good idea because they can't always make it, and you need to have a quorum. What the Planning Department's requesting, I mean, the ordinance requires seven member, regular members, and what planning staff would really like is to have seven alternates. That's not required by ordinance, but it's a good idea. So, right now, we have five members who are current members, Martin Moore, Dot Cordell, and Andy Ball. We recommend that you go ahead and name them regular members now, for the remainder of their current terms. Two members, Josh Holmes and Wendell Howard, have requested to be alternate members. We're requesting that the board name them as such now. Having, once that's accomplished, we need four recommendations for regular members from your recent interviews, and five recommendations for alternates.
Okay, can we, can we do these in two actions, so we're not confused?
Yes, we should do that.
Yes, sir. So the request is that, the first motion would be that we appoint as regular members who are currently serving on the Board of Adjustments, Martin Moore, Dot Cordell, and Andy Ball, and alternate members Josh Holmes and Wendell Howard.
Is that a form of motion, Chairman?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Also.
Are there any questions? I want to make sure this is, was clear. These are all members who are currently serving on Board of Adjustments, and we want to clarify their status.
I, I, I do want to make a comment, and, and if this is not the time, please let me know, but the alternate thing, so, so when, when they say they're alternate, and you look at Josh Holmes, he was appointed to his first term on November 20th, 2018. So he's allowed two three-year terms. Is that correct? And I, I understand the alternate position, what I don't understand is how the alternate gets called to the meeting, and if, if we're getting ready to point five alternates, will all five of them at one point get called to one meeting, two meetings? And should an alternate who may not have been called to a meeting be considered having a term as, as an alternate if they haven't participated in the meeting? That's, that's where I'd like to try to get...
The statute authorizes the appointment of alternates. They are appointed for the same term, at the same time, and the same manner as regular members. So they may never step into the shoes of being a member of that board to hear any case, but they're still three years.
That's right.
As to, I think part of what you're asking for Mr. Holmes, for instance, my position would be that since he was appointed as a regular member, now he's asking to be appointed as an alternate, his three years could start now.
So he was a regular member to start with, now he's asking me to start as an alternate?
Yes, sir.
So his three years would start over as an alternate, even though he may have already had a term of three years, so he's got?
I think that's within this board's discretion.
All right.
The way, the way we have it right now is just to name them as an alternate, first term appointed, retroactive as an alternate, November 20th, 2018.
Okay. Are Martin Moore, Dot Cordell, and Andy Ball, they're all serving as regular members currently?
Actually, they all are regular members currently, but yes.
Okay. Okay.
See, they're, they're regular members, but they're alternates, right?
No, they are regular.
No, they're all regular.
Okay.
They're regular, they just want to go to alternate.
Yeah. So how about this? Thanks for elevating this question. What if, what if we keep the people who are going to continue as regular members on their current schedule, and those who will be alternates from this motion will begin, it will be as if they're starting their first term as an alternate?
That's fine.
Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay. All right.
So they'll, they'll let them, we'll let Josh Holmes and the other one know that they're, they're starting as an alternate in their first term now.
Right. And so, so if they want to serve, they serve this term, if they want to serve again, they'd be eligible to serve an additional term if the commission agrees. Okay?
That's Josh Holmes and Wendell Howard.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Frew.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now we come back to the, the new applicants, and we need to appoint four regular members and at least four alternate members. And there's, there's an idea of five, but, but I don't think we have to do five, so I think that's a question we need to talk about. We could. But we need to do at least four. And, and so, and I think that the first decision we should make is to who to appoint for the regular position. So why don't we go through, and I think the, the most straightforward way to do this is to just ask each commissioner, you get four votes. So we'll go, we'll go, we'll start with Mr., Commissioner Penland, identify your top four, and we're going to add up who gets the most votes, in essence, and then those members will be appointed to the regular position. All the remaining folks will then, we'll discuss them, and we'll vote to appoint either four or five of them as alternates. But we can get to that in a minute. Let's, first, let's, let's...
Had a conflict on one, who was it? Remind me. Had served before?
So Greg Phillips has served two full terms on this board, so we, if we follow...
Or the Planning Board. Was it on Planning Board or this board?
Well, and he also served on the Board of Adjustments before the Planning Board.
Well, did he? That's what I'm trying to find out.
That's what he said. And I think we confirmed that in the meeting.
I don't...
Yeah, he said it. Yeah, he did.
Nate, is that what you understand?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here during that time.
All right.
We're going pretty far back here. Lamar, did you look at this question?
I didn't.
He did.
I don't know.
He did, he did say in the meeting, he served, he served on the Board of Adjustments first, two terms, and then he served on the Planning Board, so...
Okay, so he's a lifer.
Yeah, he's a lifer.
That was Greg Phillips. Is that what you said? Was that Greg Phillips? It's Greg Phillips, yeah.
He said planning first year, and then he's came back and said the other.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I did not hear him say he served his two terms on the Board of Adjustments. What he said was, served before on the Board of Adjustments, but went over to planning and zoning. He never said that he served two, three-year terms.
Okay. Can we, can we look this up right now, just to get to the bottom of this?
We have got to.
Is that, is that information that's available here, or will that take more time to, to look it up?
It may be available.
Let's, okay.
Let's look it up. Chairman, we take a minute, bathroom break.
We're quite close to being done. Let's look at the other boards real quick, and we'll come back to this while Lamar's doing some research on this question.
Oh, the others, well, we can do that.
So we've got four applicants for the Health and Human Services Board, and four, we have four openings and four applicants for that. Do we want to appoint those four?
You do have the Tourism Board for that.
Oh, yeah, 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 thanks, thanks for... Yeah, so I'd like to recommend that we do an interview for the Tourism Board.
It's only one appointment. I don't think we need to, who is, hang on.
Well, let's, let's deal with TDA first. Are you saying that there's like a requirement for, or just that you think it's a good idea?
No, I think it's, I think based on the policy.
Yeah, I want to, I have a point of clarification on that, because those are all four reappointments. Are we going to interview for reappointments?
I'd say we don't, unless we want to.
So let's talk about it. This is all kind of new, right? We just adopted the policy. My take on it means that the board has the authority to interview if we choose to. But if it's reappointments, I don't, I don't think we have to re-interview every single person who's serving on a board. I think it's, it's at our discretion to interview or not interview. We're just saying to that board, we don't want you to do the interviews. That's, that's our bailiwick, so to speak. Does that make sense, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I would say on the TDA, I do, I would want to interview for that. I just think it's an important board, spends, as we talked about tonight, spends more taxpayer money than all these other boards combined, is the TDA. And I realize, right at the moment, you know, the economy's different, but in normal years, this board is spending seven, upwards of $7 million of taxpayer money. So to me, I think it behooves us to interview applicants for this board, so I'd...
Well, we only have one applicant.
And that, I think we should interview that applicant, but I would, I think we should do an interview.
So do we have the, the information on Brenda Durden? Is that in her packet? I didn't see it.
I don't think the detailed info is here. But let's just do an interview, and we'll go from there. Okay?
I don't either.
Okay. Health and Human Services, these are reappointments, so I'm open to reappointing. Does anybody feel differently?
Mr. Chairman, hold on just a second. Let's go back to the policy we just adopted. Health and Human Services is a governance board. So if we're going to interview for the TDA, then we need to interview for the Health and Human Services.
That's correct. Keep us on, keep us on track.
The distinction is that these are reappointments. So this, these are all folks who are currently serving, they've been through a process with the county, and they want to get reappointed, so...
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that what we just adopted, if we're going to do one for the other, we, I just, I understand the reappointment, but I just think we ought to, we just adopted a policy that said we would interview anybody that's a governance board, and now we're reappointing four people who are on a governance board without interviewing them.
I see, I understand the policy we just adopted to say the decision, and the selection process and decision-making process rests with us, and we'll discern what selection process we want to use based on the board. That's what I understood the motion, or that what we just passed to say.
I mean, Commissioner Penland, do you want them interviewed?
If you're going to interview the TDA, because they still...
Do you want them interviewed?
I would like to have them interviewed, yes, because it's a governance board.
Then let's interview them.
Is the TDA a reappointment?
It's not, it's a new position.
Because I think that's the point of distinction.
Is it a recommend, we don't know if it's a recommendation or not either, do we, Lamar? Okay, it is a recommendation.
But again, for these boards, it's our call, you know. And I realize they didn't know that what we were going to do, but, you know.
I know, but you, I mean, you're, you're the one that's really hot on interviewing. Nobody else said anything.
We should do an interview. Yeah, I think we should do an interview. And I, I don't want to do interviews with the others, but if, I would also say this, if, if we're on boards where members of this commission feel strongly that we should do interviews, I would err on the side of doing interviews. But I would just also say, if we have folks in good standing who are filing for reappointment, I'd, I hope we're not going to get in the business of re-interviewing every single person.
I, I want us to make sure we're consistent on that. I mean, if we're going to do that, I don't disagree with if they're reappointing and then, and they've been, they've done a good job, and we've got a good recommendation, then in some cases, it probably feels like a slap in the face for those people to get, get interviewed, but...
Just, right, so...
So these are four recommendations. I'll leave that to Mr. Penland, the conversations with you right now, so.
There, I just want to be consistent, that's all. So if they're reappointments and the recommendations, it just seems like we're, it's fine.
Where's the new?
That's where I draw, I, I do draw that line, is a reappointment is one thing. A recommendation that is not a reappointment, to me, does bag to have an interview versus someone who is just wanting to continue their service to that particular board than someone who is new. So with, with that in my head, I would support the interview for the TDA because it is not a reappointment, just a recommendation. The HHS Board, all four are reappointments, wanting to continue their service. And I will certainly speak from being the commissioner that serves on HHS, all four of those are incredibly engaged and committed to the HHS.
So you recommend those four?
I would recommend those four.
Well, that's what I want to hear. I want to hear somebody on that board tell me that these are people that should stay.
I would recommend all four of them, absolutely.
All right. Is that a motion, Commissioner Edwards?
That is a motion to approve the four recommendations for reappointments.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and a second to reappoint the four currently serving Health and Human Services Board members. Further discussion? And I think, I mean, we're kind of living into this. I think these are good questions. I do want us to be consistent. So, but I think this distinction between appointment and reappointment is a good distinction to, to think about.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we can go backwards, but if we could go back and just clarify in the, the original talk of this chart, that reappointments would be considered in a different format. I don't know if we can go backwards and say that, but...
You actually, you can't, but unless you put it on another day.
Can we add that to the statute to say...
The rule say, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, we can add that to our recommendation, that reappointments in good standing could be recommendations to the board for considerations.
And that's consistent, that's fine.
So there will be recommendations for your consideration, again, if you choose to interview or not?
I think, I think to, to take that up, and we did vote on this as an item, and we moved on.
You can't, you can't do it.
I mean, I think from a procedure standpoint, we would basically just need to go back to that item if we want to clarify it. Michael, do you have any recommendations on that?
An item that's approved, can, you can go back to an item at the same meeting at which it was voted on and approved.
Why don't we, if that's okay, I mean, I think we're just trying to get this, so we're not having to revisit it every time. So, so let's go, if by consensus, we can go back to the previous overarching policy and talk about this appointment/reappointment question. So I'd like to make a motion, and, and my motion is going to be that, that members who are in good standing, who are applying for reappointment to a board, I'm trying to think about the wording on this, because, so let me give it a shot, may often be reappointed by the board without interviews, if they're in good standing and have met the attendance recommendations or requirements of the board. So that's, that's my motion. And, and let me just say a little bit about why I phrased it that way. I think it would be unwise for us to bind ourselves to an automatic reappointment process for anyone, because that's just, that, again, that would be a step away from exercising meaningful oversight. But I think within our policies, so whoever's sitting in these chairs, you know, years in the future and looking at this, we're basically saying, it's going to be a, probably a routine matter for us to reappoint currently serving members without doing an interview. But I do think we absolutely need to reserve that right, just in case there's something, you know, there might be something going on where we really feel like, hey, we need to check... But I do think we absolutely need to reserve that right, just in case there's something, you know, there might be something going on where we really feel like, hey, we need to check in on this. And I would be very wary of adopting an official policy that puts in writing that we can't do that. So I'm, that's why I chose that language of, we, we, we may often do that, rather than that's how it will happen 100% of the time. So that's, that's my motion. Anybody think it's a good idea?
I'll second it. And then I just want to, since we're, we're, we are really down the rabbit hole, I do want to make sure we close one other loop that got brought up a week or so ago, two weeks ago.
Y'all killing me. You're killing me.
But which was that, we did, we did have this whole discussion about when people are reapplying, they are resubmitting actual physical applications so that we can do a fresh conflict of interest assessment. So I think that as part of this process, we, we should, if, if we are going to waive an interview for reappointment, it would be in our best interest to at least review the conflict of interests prior to that. Which would mean, I think, just simply receiving the written applications.
Y'all getting way, y'all getting way into the weeds on this.
Why don't we?
I think that's the, no, this is, this is, we had this whole discussion about why people have to actually submit paper applications again, and it was so that we have a fresh record of any conflict of interest. So I just, if we can bring that into the mix on this.
Okay. Here's what I'd suggest, Commissioner. Why don't we vote on, if there's a second, oh, you did second it. Why don't we vote on this motion? My hope is that you will make a motion to do exactly what you just said, following the resolution of the motion on the table. Okay?
So I want to make sure that procedurally, we're doing this right. I'm not, I'm not 100% comfortable with the motion. There's a specific, someone that is, is someone who has, the person that made or voted for the previous motion, the motion we just did, not, not this one, but the, where we just voted for the boards, and we had that long discussion. And you can make a motion to amend, as long as the, someone who voted for it, which Brown did, makes that motion to amend within the same meeting. Because we can't just.
What's the process, Commissioner?
It's called a motion to amend.
There is no motion to amend right now. There's a motion on the floor. This is a separate motion.
You can't do a separate motion because it was, you can't do a separate motion about just something that's not on the agenda.
I think that, I think, so, so we made a decision about.
Boards and commissions.
Let me finish. We made a decision about which of our boards and commissions, the, those boards and commissions will make recommendations on, and which ones are within the purview of the county commissioners. What we're talking about right now is a, a, a little bit of a different question. It's about whether the county commissioners will interview people. For, for the boards that were, that are within our purview, we will 100% of the time interview people or not. And so I'm, I'm suggesting a motion that states that the county commissioners' view on this is that for folks who are applying for reappointment, we will frequently choose not to interview them if they're in good standing. But we're, we're going to use language where we reserve, we make it clear, we reserve that right if we need to.
May I, I, I think we're looking at a motion to reconsider, which you could introduce, that would, that would reconsider this, and then you could add this in. I think that that was.
All right. So what I'm supposed to.
Let, let Mr. Free.
So, yeah, the, the, the rule reads, motion must be made by a member who voted with the prevailing side. The motion must be made at the same meeting in which the original vote was taken. The motion cannot interrupt deliberation on a pending matter, but is in order at any time before adjournment.
Okay, so we need a motion to.
What's that called?
That's a motion to reconsider.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to get to, Chairman, before you showed me your hand. But, um, that there is a procedural way to do this. You can't just make a motion.
So.
Okay? You can't just make that motion. You have to make a motion to reconsider.
I, look, I don't, I don't consider the motion we're talking about right now to be, to be on the same motion that was made before. I don't think we're reconsidering that. That's all settled. I don't hear anyone disagreeing with it. This is a different question. When we're on an agenda item, you can actually have several different motions to address different aspects of the issue, is my view. Mr. Free, would you agree with that or disagree with that? I think this is just a little bit, and, and I don't, ultimately, what would you recommend, Mr. Free? We want to, we want to, we want to clarify when we're going to do interviews. Could you give us a recommendation?
I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, that you're on the right track. But I do think that we do have the motion on the table to reappoint the four Health and Human Services Board members.
Yes.
Once that's accomplished, I think you're in order to proceed.
Okay. All right. That's, that's fine. All right, we're going to. That's fine. That's fine. All right, let's, we're going to deal with that motion on the floor, and then we're going to go back to this, to this policy level issue. All right. All in favor of?
So we are going to go back and reappoint and not interview?
The, the motion that was on the table, made by Commissioner Edwards, is to appoint, to reappoint the four members to HHS. Mr. Free was advising us to resolve that issue before we take up the higher-level policy question.
I'll call the question.
Which we'll do. I want to make sure he answers this question. Is that clear?
Yeah, not really.
What's the question?
The motion before this was, we was going to look into interviewing these, and now it seems to me that we're going a different direction.
I think we just have to make a decision on this. On this, on this specific, there's a motion on the floor with a second.
And this has to be done tonight?
We're going to deal with this tonight. Yes, sir. All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Those four members have been appointed. Now, Mr. Free, we'd like to go back and discuss the policy level issue of when we're going to do interview, or, or, if the, if the board wants to reappoint folks without interviewing them, if they're in good, good standing, but reserving the clear right to do so. That's, I think that's the, what the board would like to do. What's your suggestion? Is it a motion to reconsider the, the earlier motion that we approved, or can we make a new motion to just clarify that specific point?
I think it's a motion to reconsider.
Okay. Could you?
So, yes, the, the motion would be had to made by a member who voted on the prevailing side.
Which we, I think we all, we all did, right?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Beach.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the, the measure we just passed regarding boards and commissions, and thus reopen discussion about that.
No, you, that ain't what you.
Is that right?
Or do I need to go into the substance of?
No, you got to make it specific.
Let Michael answer the question.
Yeah, I'm right, but go ahead.
Is the motion to reconsider just to get us back into the discussion, or should I put the substance of it on the floor?
I think it's either way.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't weigh down that far.
All right.
Okay, okay. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider that and that we specifically address the question of how reappointments will be made. And specifically add language saying that the Board of Commissions may waive the interview, interview process for recommended reappointments, and that we will ensure that there's a fresh conflict of interest, or a, a, current conflict of interest review for re-applicants who are reappointed.
So she just amended your amendment.
By a requirement to submit an updated application?
Um, if, if I may, just on that last part, the policy that the board adopted on December 17th, 2019, I just sent a copy of the policy to all of the commission as well. It states that a new application is required for those seeking reappointment. So.
That would be redundant then.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. May, let me, let me try again, and I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the previous measure and to add language saying that the Board of Commissions may waive interviews for reappointments. And that would apply across all four categories, or, or, it would require, apply across all four categories of boards and commissions.
Is there a second to the motion to reconsider? There's a second to the motion to reconsider? Further discussion?
So I'll just say that we still have that ability in the previous motion, in the previous motion. Therefore, I will be voting no. We still have that ability in, in the rules before, because we're the final authority. So we can do what we're doing tonight, which is, we, we want, we want to take the recommendation of those boards and not interview them, so. So anyhow, that's just my opinion, so.
All right. Further discussion? And I, I agree with what you said, but I still think this is helpful, because I think we are trying to set forth for the future. I, I feel like when we get to boards and commissions, we are constantly having to discuss the process for it. And I think to the extent that we can just get some of this written down, so that there's a, it makes this process smoother and sets good expectations for us as commissioners and for the good citizens of our community who apply for them, I just think it's helpful. So, all right. All in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right. Could you please raise your hand if you voted yes, just to make sure we're clear? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Now we're, we're back to our other board appointments. And, Mr. Joyner, have you been able to discern if Greg Phillips served two terms on Board of Adjustments?
I have not. I have, I have seen history of one term, and that term started on 6/5/07, and it ended on 5/26/09.
Okay, so.
I don't have history of it. I can't say it didn't happen, but I always have history of one term.
Do you know who served on the board prior to 6/5/07?
Chairman, do we have, um, or, um, Mr. Free, do, do we have a deadline on the Board of Adjustment? Can we not find out about Mr. Phillips and do this next meeting? Because he's, he's, he's very, he's very qualified if he's not served too many terms.
We, we do have history before 6/5/07.
And so who was serving immediately prior to that? Or was Mr., was Mr. Phillips serving immediately prior to that?
I don't have record of Mr. Phillips serving before that time. In order to tell who was all serving before his recommended, I would have to go through each individual member. So I don't have that.
Thank you. Thank you. So he served one term that we know of, but he wasn't serving immediately before that. So that sounds like what we know tonight.
So how many terms are, are there?
You're allowed to serve two, two terms.
So it sounds like it was one?
That'd be two consecutive terms. Right. That'd be two consecutive terms. I mean, I, I think he'd be eligible at the end.
So we, we, well, we talked, well, let's get, let's talk about that question, because I thought we looked at this at the last meeting and concluded that the policy says you're allowed to serve two terms, period. And it doesn't, it doesn't reference taking time off and then, and then being able to serve more. So, and, um, are you able to look that up, kind of?
I am.
Okay, great. Let's, let's, I know this is taking a lot of time, but I think this is important. This is an important board. Mr. Phillips is very qualified, but we want to follow the rules. So we're just trying to get all the facts.
Free, is that by statute?
This is the one you just sent me.
Okay, yeah, so. I was going to read it, but go ahead. I'm looking at 5.4 terms are limited to two full consecutive terms in any one position.
Consecutive terms.
Yeah, so they can skip.
Okay, so if you take time off, then you become re-eligible to apply again.
So he's eligible.
Yes, and the policy may be waived by the commissioners if they determine, uh, that that's necessary.
But it, do you agree that by using the term consecutive, that we wouldn't have to waive the policy if someone has chosen to not serve for a while and then re applies in the future?
I'm not sure I follow. I mean, if he, if he hadn't served, if he served two consecutive terms and he hadn't served since 2010, I would say he'd be eligible by the policy that.
And he served, when did he serve that you found?
Could you read it one more time, Michael? Just read it one more time. Just have, listen to that language of it.
Terms are limited to two full consecutive terms in any one position, excluding the fulfillment of an unexpired term. The policy may be waived if the commissioners determine that the removal of an individual made ineligible by this policy would be detrimental to the functioning of that board.
Yeah, so I, I, I personally, just listening to that, to me, it's just, it's a, it's a little bit unclear. I don't want to rewrite all this tonight, but I would, because I think you can interpret that both ways. Part of me hears, if you've served two consecutive terms, you've, you've served what you can serve on that board. I think another way of looking at it is that if you've served two consecutive terms, if you take time off, you can reapply. I think you could probably argue it both ways. My suggestion for tonight is that we, we deem, um, if you want to, if, I think if folks want to support Greg Phillips, I think it's fine. I think we can take more time and, you know, if we want to clarify that language at some point in the future to make it clear one way or the other, but I don't think we should take that up tonight. All right. So commissioners, I think the first thing we need to do is vote for the four new regular members. So let's start with Commissioner Penland. And I'd like to ask everyone to kind of go slow so that Lamar can capture all the, all the folks who are supported. So, Mr. Penland.
Greg Phillips. Wesley Green. Gabe Quisenberry. And Catherine Morisani.
Mr. Presley.
Okay, Chairman, are we going just four, or our first pick, second pick?
Do your.
Is it going to be a scoring, or?
Do your top four, and, and then we're going to add up who, who the top four are overall, and they'll get appointed to the regular spots, and then we'll do the alternates. Okay?
Okay, Catherine Morisani. Gabe Quisenberry. Wesley Green. And Greg Phillips.
Catherine Morisani, Joel Mizellis, Carla Bernard, and Tim Henderson.
All right. I'm going to support Tim Henderson, Carla Bernard, Joel Mizellis, and Catherine Morisani. Mr. Belcher?
Uh, Wesley Green, Greg Phillips, Gabe Quisenberry, and Catherine Morisani.
Commissioner Whitesides?
Oh, it's only Morisani, Quisenberry.
Hold on. All right.
Quisenberry, Bernard, and Phillips.
Commissioner Edwards?
All right. Catherine Morisani, Gabe Quisenberry, Joel Mizellis, and Carla Bernard.
Okay. So Morisani and Quisenberry got the top two. Carla Bernard and Greg Phillips both got four, which I believe would make them the next two.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Mr. Joyner, did you get the same result? All right. So Greg Phillips got four votes, Gabe Quisenberry got five, Catherine Morisani got seven, and Carla Bernard got four. And none of the other members got four. So there wasn't a tie.
Did we get anybody that got, so how are we going to do the alternates? Going to do the same drill for the alternates, or do you want?
Yeah, I think we should just, I think we need to, what you need to do is you need to mark off the people who just got voted on as regulars, and we're just going to do this again. And I, but one question is whether to do four or five positions. Ultimately, the board wants five. But I would lean towards doing four, for now.
What is your thinking on that, Chairman? Why, why do you want to do four?
Hang on one second. Let me, let me look at this one. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I'd be fine doing, I'd be fine doing either way. I prefer four, but I'm fine with five.
Why are they asking for five? Are they asking for five?
Yeah. And they asked for five.
That would be seven alternates. Have mercy.
Yeah, it does seem like a huge number.
Uh, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I bring something up? So the ones that did not make it, what was it, two others or three? So the ones that did not make it, what was it, two others, or three others that did not make the top four?
That's a great point. So the others who got some votes, but didn't get enough votes to get in the regular, Wesley Green got three, Joel Mizellis got three, and Tim Henderson got two.
Correct.
So they were the next highest level of support. We could go ahead and appoint them.
So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint those three as alternates.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to appoint Wesley Green, Joel Mizellis, and Tim Henderson as three of the alternates. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's three, so we, now we need to do one or two more.
So can I make a motion? I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Vakaflore and Kelman.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, commissioners, thanks, and we appreciate everyone's, all the interest in this board. Okay.
So we had five alternates and four regulars, right?
One more housekeeping while we're at it, to make it as clean as we can. For the highest vote-getters, would, for, that'd be Morisani. I would oppose to enter into stagger to give her a two-year term now. That would give her two, three-year terms thereafter. That's usually preferable than a full three-year term to start.
Why is that?
Well, because then, if she's a rock star in the position, she could be on for 10 years.
Okay, so you're saying that those who got more support get the potentially longer terms?
Yes.
I think that principle makes sense. Does anybody disagree?
No, it's fine.
Okay, all right. Very good, thank you, Mr. Frew. All right, now we come to the Civic Center Commission. We've got one reappointment, and, and that's the only decision we need to make, or.
We got one reappointment, and we got three names?
Who is the current member serving?
So.
Oh, it's, okay, I'm sorry, I misread this, it's getting late. It's just one appointment, I swear I read it as reappointment. Okay, so commissioners, should we do interviews?
Have a recommendation?
They're all recommended.
They're all recommended.
I did, I did have, yes, a letter in your packet with.
For who?
For two people.
Just Willing and Brown.
So, I don't like this, but I'm gonna make a recommendation, if they've given us two, that we interview those two.
Does anybody disagree with that? Everybody comfortable interviewing those two? All right, I don't hear any disagreement. We'll interview those, we're gonna interview Rick Willing and Shay Brown.
It's a third one, huh?
I mean, we, we could interview them.
It's three.
I agree, but, so this board is talking about what it wants to do, right? And there's a suggestion, and.
Well, it's just one more, y'all wanna order, go ahead and interview all three, but we've got two recommendations, so what do y'all want to do? I'm okay either way.
Let's interview all three.
All right.
All right, we're gonna interview all three. Homeless Initiative, we've got two appointments and two applications.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Jennifer Teague and Tamea Jones.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On HRC, we have one appointment and one reappointment. Stephanie West has served a partial term. I'll make a motion to reappoint Stephanie West.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we got one other vacancy, and Jim Coman has applied.
I'll make a motion to Jim Coman. I make a motion to appoint.
You get to choose, that's right, that's right.
I make a motion to appoint James Coman.
I'll second.
Okay. And I'll support that, too, he's very qualified.
Oh, yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, commissioners, thanks for all your diligence on this. Do we have a need for a closed session? Great. We now come to public comment. And, Mr. Joyner, what do we have for public comment?
So we have a couple of email public comments that is in each commissioner's packet, and we have a couple of voicemails that Max will play for us.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I'm not seeing the, okay, I'll read the comments. Thank you, Commissioner Beachraro. So I'll just read these first, and then we'll do the voicemails, if that's okay. Norris Chef wrote and said, "As a member of the Women's Commission, I recommend that individual commissions have the power to interview and screen applicants, so that we ensure we have diverse representation on our commission." Ariel Shoemaker said, "That as part of the Buncombe County Women's Commission, we would love to see that we have control over who's being assigned to each commission. Our primary concerns are access to the commissions, and in particular, ensuring our representation is diverse and equitable across SES. We're also hopeful there can be some discussion about creating a line item in the budget for the various advisory commissions, given that having some budget honorary will improve access to having a more diverse representation of community voices." Thank you. All right, and are we ready to play the voicemails now?
My name is Natilda Bliss, I live in West Asheville. I am commenting on the general public comment, period. Testing is still nowhere near where it should be. That said, with the county's reopening of community test sites, while true to form, adding new restrictions, we are back to seeing 200 cases per week in Buncombe. The county has twice hoped that reduced testing would mean more capitalism, as people lose access to information that can be used to make informed decisions. We are over the 2,000 official known case threshold, and charging headlong toward 2,520, which would mean that approximately 1 in 100 county residents would have already officially contracted the virus. A virus that can kill, a virus that takes organs behind the shed and mangles them, like these systems of domination such as capitalism do to anything that's in the way. I don't know if you're actually going to play my whole comment. You've been condensing my comment into comments of others that are similar. They're not exact, I know that for, for certain. But I hope that you play this, if not read it. We're gonna keep asking that you actually address this local pandemic. You know, we ask that you stop this reopening, it's ridiculous. You have to abolish the TDA, we're sick of it. We need you to shut down the hotels. Look, I mean, locals are getting arrested because they're trying to raise awareness at local hotels. Like, they're trying to tell people it's dangerous, like at the Renaissance. And APD, which Buncombe supports, goes in there and arrests people, beats them in the street. You must actually test people. You must send funds to the Latinx community that's getting hit incredibly hard. Quarter of all cases, really disproportionate number. And you must haul evictions during this pandemic, this is ridiculous. Sheriff Miller needs to stop this. And as we don't really expect that to happen, we want 50% of the sheriff and the jail budget that must be used to pay reparations, including economic well-being for Black and Brown residents, deeply affordable housing, land provision, equitable education outcomes, mental health services, rent subsidies, and eviction diversion, free public transportation, restorative justice services. You must do this, we're going, not going to shut up.
Don Yelton, Jupiter Road in North Buncombe. This is my public comment. As I look over the past agenda, I see a lot of budget amendments. Amendments means changes in money flow. Has anyone seen just how these amendments affect the overall budget, especially now that Asheville has a progressive reputation? Maybe that job is too hard, or exposes too much money shifting. It's very easy to work behind masks and have no public in the room. What is wrong with having the two rooms that you have used in the past? The one on the third floor had our sheriff come in and take a person of color into the general room. That was not equal treatment, just like some others that this one party has supported. Now, for the meat of my comment. I will repeat what a professional tax person has said. Re-evaluation should not occur right now. We should wait till next year to observe the effects of all of the bad publicity coming out by social media. The local press is running and hiding from the riots. Yes, riots, when people shut down streets, enter hotels, paint graffiti, break windows, and a DA charges a retired veteran policeman for protection of officers. Our sheriff seems to have communication with organizers. One commissioner wants to encourage more to join the riots. That will have an effect on property values, and then you will stuff your coppers to move the Vance Monument, rename streets, and anything else Antifa wants under the guise of BLM. More people will avoid visits, business will suffer, and people will leave. If you push on with this re-evaluation under the guise of open meetings, you're only fooling yourselves. Those of us who work for a living see through your masks and not allowing public in the meetings. Look at how strapped for money Asheville is. The taxes residents in small houses pay. And a lot of those folks are the ones that Al Whiteside says are his people. Don't see a lot of help there, because every tax increase makes housing more expensive. So does paying reparations. End of comment.
Is that?
That's it.
Okay.
Before you, before you adjourn, is there any determination on when you want to do these interviews? I think we have possibly two boards that needs to be interviewed for.
I'd like to do them the day of the meeting, I wouldn't like to do another day if we could afford.
Okay, is there agreement, maybe we do these prior to the next briefing?
We have a 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. early childhood meeting?
We have a 1:00 to 2:30 p.m. early childhood meeting that day, but if there was any flexibility in the, between the, I guess, potentially earlier, or between the 2:30 and.
How many do we have to do again?
Not too many, right?
It's just a few, what if, what if, could we, could we be judicious with our time on the briefing meeting? So we get done by, say, 4:15. I think we could do the interviews prior, between the briefing meeting and the regular meeting. If we don't put too much on the agenda, and we.
I think that's enough time.
How many do we have to interview?
I think we have four.
Okay, well, we'd have to stop by probably 4 o'clock, so.
You gotta have an hour. Why don't we just do it at 12 o'clock?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do it at noon, before the other meetings start.
Yeah, that would give us, yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
So would you need us to bring in lunch?
Yeah, if we could, if we're gonna do it at noon, I think it'd be good to, if we could have some sandwiches or something.
Yeah, we can get here about 11:30 and start on time.
All right, great. All right, just have a brief announcement. The next meeting of the County Commission, we're gonna have a special meeting at noon on September 1st to interview some applicants for boards and commissions. But that will be done via a conference call. So I think people who wish to listen to that can talk to the county clerk, and you can get the information for how you can listen to that. Let's come back to that later. It's, we've talked to Lamar, it would be challenging, but it's being looked at as an idea. Their next regular meeting of the County Commission is at 3 p.m. It's the briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326, and then the regular meeting's at 5 p.m. on September 1st. To answer your question, I think the staff are looking at that idea, but there are some challenges with it. Lamar, do you have any kind of initial comments?
Do y'all have any objection to doing the interviews in here? If we were able to host them in here?
Do you mean on a conference line, or Zoom, or what?
Yes, if you, if you're asking for video of that. Max.
You know, I, I mean, I personally like to spread out as much as we can. There are some other rooms that allow that more than this one, when we're all sitting at this one table. If there's a way we could spread out in this room, that would, I'd just, I'd like to just be able to spread out as much as we can, because some of these interviews go on a long time.
Max just also stated that if you wanted to do Zoom, everybody, all the commissioners on Zoom, you could do it that way. That is a possibility.
If there is, I think that would be, that'd be great. So keep us posted on the technology that y'all recommend. I think the more interactive, the better, but we'll, we'll leave it to y'all to figure that out. Okay, all right, commissioners, thank you all, and we're adjourned. Oh, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye. We're adjourned.